Hello and welcome to the special meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee. You're barred for August 29th in Council Chambers of 600 East Broadway. Role call, please.
Committee members Armenian.
Present.
Avedisian.
Present.
Manukian. Vice Chair Quinones Gabrielian.
Here.
Chair Garibian.
Present.
The agenda for the August 29, 2022 special meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Friday, August 26, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item two introductions and presentations at A is recognition of outgoing committee member Norai Gazarian for five years of service to the CDBG Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon Chair Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee. Today, we would like to recognize our outgoing member of the CDBG Advisory Committee since 2017. Norai Razarian has been an integral part of this committee for the past five years. He's been an active member of service groups in our community. Crescent Valley Chapter, Chamber of Commerce, Home Management Cipon Chapter, and the Armenian Apostolic Church. And as the General Manager of High Star Auto Sales, Mr. Gazarian brought a wealth of his knowledge and help to make important funding recommendations for this CDBG Committee. So we will miss you and we wish you well, Mr. Gazarian. And I'll turn it over to our Chair, Mr. Ronnie Garibian, to present the plaque.
Thank you so much. Before I come down, President, I just want to say thank you for your service for the five years. You were one of the, I would say, a neutral person among all of us, and you're giving us more of the direction. So thank you so much. You've been great and we're gonna definitely miss you.
Can we say a few words? I just, I just want to add, Mr. Gazarian, that it was a pleasure serving with you. And I will add to the Chairman's remarks and say, you were very open-minded and thoughtful in your deliberations, and I really appreciated that. Thank you.
My name is Norai Razarian. I was appointed Commissioner, Rajahajani appointed me for the CDBG Commissioner. He is the Council Member Mayor. And I started in 2017, and I was a part of CDBG until today, 2022. Thank you for my colleague, Ronnie Garibian, Zango Armenian, Armik Avedisian, and Anita Garibian. And the city staff Maggie Kavarian, and Onik, sorry, I gotta... Onik Glakian, Iris Hernandez, Eric Adamian, and Tamar Kavarian. Helping me to do, fulfill my duties as a Commissioner for the city of Glendale. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Glendale. Thank you very much. I wish all the best.
Thank you. They, some of the, they wanted to wish their best to Armenian.
Thank you, Mr. Garibian. Mr. Gazarian, I wanted to say thank you for your camaraderie on the dais. But more importantly, you know, we didn't always agree on all the decisions that we made as a Commission. What I really appreciated is how we did it and how we sometimes disagreed, which was everyone bringing their point of view, including yours, which was often different than mine or others. And I just appreciate how it was done. We need more of that kind of civil deliberation, you know, in our bodies and in the way we conduct ourselves in the public. So I really appreciate the way you brought your thoughts to the table and how it was all done. So I really appreciate that and I hope and look forward to staying in touch with you.
Thank you, Zango.
I just want to echo my fellow Commissioners, Mr. Garibian, thank you, Mr. Gazarian, sorry. Thank you for your service. Thank you for working with us. Seriously, it was a different matter for every time that we sit, we sat and collaborated. Every time there was a challenge, and you brought us the challenge in order for us to look otherwise and look more details or more, more ways of doing things. So thank you. It was great meeting you. Hopefully we'll see you throughout the city in the different departments or different programs. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Armik.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else, staff? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the city.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, Iris, what's next?
Next on the agenda is to be introduction of new CDBG Advisory Committee member Marina Manukian.
Thank you, Commissioner, President Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee. I'd like to welcome and introduce Ms. Marina Manukian. She has been a Glendale resident for 28 years. She's a practicing attorney, graduated from Loyola Law School as well as UCLA. She has been practicing for 27 years and specializing in civil litigation, including real estate, business, and construction litigation. And she's also a certified family law specialist with the State Bar. She also is a member of a number of boards in organizations, one being the Glendale Home and Menara Chapter. She currently also sits on the Tufankian Preschool Board. And she's also a member of the Armenian Bar Association as part of Domestic Violence Committee. And Staff and I, we met with her last week, and she also, I mentioned that she wrote the policies and procedures and assisted the Armenian government in the new domestic laws in Armenia, which was very interesting. And she also assists with the Glendale Chapter, Glendale Ara Chapter, and part of their Drug Prevention and Education Committee. And I know that Committee works closely with our Glendale Police Department to provide drug recognition and different types of workshops for the parents and members of that organization. I do like to welcome our newest Advisory Member, Ms. Marina Manukian. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm very happy to be part of this board. I'm looking forward to learning from my colleagues, learning from the staff, doing my homework, and making the best decisions I can to add value to this board. I do want to make one correction. I'm not on the Board of the Home and Menara Chapter. I'm only in their Committee for the Drug Prevention and Education. And in terms of the domestic violence laws in Armenia, I have been part of drafting a white paper to make improvements to it. That's the, that's the project that we're working on. With those corrections, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for the introduction.
You're welcome, sure.
Yes, I want to give you my official and enthusiastic welcome to our committee. I, I love your background and we, I, the diversity and the experience broadens our horizons, and I look forward to working with you. Welcome.
I just wanted to add my bit. I've come to know Commissioner Manukian throughout the community, and I know Commissioner Manukian, you're gonna add a lot of value to this conversation. As you'll see, there is homework involved, so I'm glad you're willing to do it because we do like to get close to the organizations that we fund and support, and there's many of many worthwhile organizations, of course, more than we can possibly fund. So our decisions are difficult ones, but appreciate, will appreciate your perspective because I think you're gonna add a lot of new dimensions to our conversation, so look forward to it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Manukian, welcome. I'll just cut it short. Looking forward, working with you, collaborating, fighting with each other sometimes, and arguments, light arguments, but for the best of the community and our organizations. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So as I mentioned my welcome earlier before we started the meeting, obviously, but to make it official, welcome to the Board. Definitely having another point of view, especially from the law perspective. We have no lawyers on the dais here, so that should bring down some challenges as well, which is a healthy challenge, so we get to make those decisions. But welcome, and let's start the chapter.
Thank you.
Iris.
Next, item three minutes. At A, approval of the minutes of the March 4, 2022 CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting. At B is approval of the minutes of the March 7, 2022 CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting. And you're welcome to take these items together or separately, all members were present with the exception of, of course, our new committee member, Manukian.
We can take it unless you guys have any corrections on it. If not, we can take it all at once.
I move approval to accept both sets of minutes.
Second.
I'll take role call. Committee members Armenian.
Yes.
Avedisian.
Yes.
Manukian.
I would have seen.
Thank you. Vice Chair Quinones Gabrielian.
Yes.
And Chair Garibian.
Yes.
Okay, motions carry, motion carries. Item four, oral communications. We don't have any cards or callers. Item five, reports information only. At A is status of active year-to-date CDBG capital improvement projects.
Chair Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee. Staff has prepared a PowerPoint presentation for the Committee to review the active CDBG capital improvement projects. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Tomat Kabanjan, our project manager.
Good afternoon, Chair Garibian, CDBG Advisor Committee members and city staff. I will be presenting to community capital improvement project status. For city CIP projects, we have Fremont Park renovation project, Palancony Park Playground and Shade Structure project, Pacific Park Artificial Turf Multipurpose Field project, Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure Improvement project, and Pacific Park Splash Pad project. For our community CIP project, physical year 2022 to 2023, repiping, repiping project Essentia, Hamilton House CIP, Campbell Center Lexington CIP, building YWCA of Glendale and Pastina. For physical year 2021 to 2022, we have Alma House CIP, Campbell Center Restroom Renovation Project Home Management Otterad Main Campus, first-floor all-inclusive locker room project, YMCA Glendale. For physical year 2020 to 2021, we have Glendale Community Center Roofing Project, Catholic Charities of Los Angeles Roofing Project Home Management Otterad Main Campus. Physical year 2019 to 2020, we have HVAC Project Home Management Otterad Main Campus, Bleachers Project Home Management Otterad Main Campus, Glendale Community Center Improvement Project Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. Next slide, please. The first one is Fremont Park renovation project. We have rendering here to what the project will look like after it is complete. The rendering shows picnic pavilion, public art display, drinking fountain, 35 parking spaces, bleachers, half basketball court, and walking paths. CDBG funding is a total of $625,668. This includes funding of 2023 to 2024. The status of the project is project is undergoing final review of specifications by the City Attorney's Office. Bidding will commence in fall 2022. We estimate around September, October. Dance started start of construction is winter 2022, with an estimation completion of fall-winter 2024.
And Ms. Kabanjan?
Yes.
Just so that we, I understand, and I know that where you're also trying to follow 5A, correct? Is the, is there any other tab that would give us more, or the presentation plus 5A? Is that correct, Ms. Kabarian?
Vice, Vice Chair Anita Quinones Gabrielian, that is correct. In your packets, you have the reports written out, and Ms. Kabanjan is providing you the PowerPoint with 5A.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Next slide, please. Our next is Palancony Park Playground and Shade Structure project. Okay, next slide. Our CDBG funding is $494,966. Scope includes replace aging playground equipment with up-to-date code-compliant play equipment and shade canopies covering playground areas. Status of the project is building and safety has reviewed, the project plans are ready to issue permits. Bidding for the project comments in July 2022. Purchasing department is reviewing and finalizing the bid packet submissions and will award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The project is expected to be completed in fall 2022. Next is Pacific Park Artificial Turf Multipurpose Field project. There's existing condition on the left, and on the right is the rendering. Total available budget is $1,840,000. A scope is convert existing natural turf baseball field to multipurpose artificial turf field. Addition of new fencing and gates increased field availability by 92 days per year after completion of the project. Status update. Lifecycle assessment study was presented to City Council in June 2022. LCA study found artificial turf to be weak, altered. However, City Council determined directed staff to maintain this site as natural turf. Project will not be moving toward construction in current scope of work. Plans are being developed to reconstruct the field with proper drainage grading and with natural turf. Staff is working with HUD to approve the project with current funding used as natural turf. Staff will return to CDBG Advisor Committee at a low, at a later date to reappropriate these CDBG fundings to another CIP project if not approved as natural turf by HUD.
Tomat, if I may just stop you for one minute. The Artificial Turf Multipurpose Field project is very unique. We had waited for Council to make a decision on the lifecycle assessment. They did. They chose that the artificial turf be used as natural. We are working to see if we can even move forward with a different scope of work and convert back to natural turf. We're working with HUD right now, and we're actually, it's literally fluid, the situation. We're waiting to hear back to hear if they will allow it. If they allow it, it will be a reduced amount. Not sure exactly how much the reduced amount will be, not so much the million dollars that you're seeing here. Regardless, we will be coming back to the CDBG Committee to reappropriate funds, whether it's the million nine or possibly a little bit less if they approve the natural turf.
Do you know how many hours that will cut down going to natu? I mean, I like the idea of going to natural, but you know, I just wondered how many hours it'll reduce the availability of the field.
President Garibian, members of the Committee, the, currently, we use the field for Little League only, so January through July. We were hoping with Artificial Turf field, we would also use it for the soccer season and have our soccer use it as an overflow field, since the current Artificial Turf field at Pacific is booked seven days a week. So there will be a impact, not an impact, but we were hoping to use it 2,900 hours, I believe it was 2,900 hours a year, 29 or 8,900 hours? I gotta go back and look. But we are going to have less usage with Artificial Turf because the, I'm sorry, with natural turf, because the field will be closed for renovation between the month of November all the way through the end of January. So we will continue to do what we were doing, is closing the field three months out of the year and having the teams use the field nine months out of the year.
Okay.
With Artificial Turf, we would have usage 365 days a year unless of thunderstorms or high heat advisory.
Right. Thank you. Can I ask a question? Just to be clear, the, one of the scope listed here is increased field availability by 92 days per year. So with the natural turf, that would not be part of the scope?
That was the original scope.
That was the original scope with Artificial Turf. The 92 days per year is the 92 days that we have it closed due to renovations. So what we do is we go in there laser level, we aerate, we seed, fertilize, and get it ready for Little League season.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the current irrigation recycled water?
It's reclaimed water, yes.
Okay. And is there any sort of, are you gonna factor in, I assume, the drought situation, or does that not apply when it's reclaimed water?
It won't apply when it's reclaimed water, but we are also going to install catch basins and some groundwater storage where we can use to irrigate the rest of the facility.
So the reclaimed water is not subject to what we're about to see for the next two weeks from MWD in terms of being cut off?
Yes. Our potable water facilities will be cut off, the irrigation, starting September 6 through September 20. But our facilities with reclaimed water will continue to be watered two to three days a week. Thank you.
I have one more, just really quickly. The, the process that you talked about for resodding, et cetera, that doesn't allow us to, to use it for those additional three months or so, is that a yearly cycle, or is that only the first year?
Yearly cycle.
Every year?
Every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Please continue.
Any other questions?
No, go ahead.
So next is Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure project. Next slide. CDBG funding is $191,522. Scope includes installation of permanent shade structures at two playground areas, installation of two shade structures, Pacific Community Pool Deck area. Status of the project is the project drawings are 100% completed and resubmitted to LA County for approval. Project specifications are completed and being reviewed by City Legal Department. Project is expected to start in fall 2022 and completed by winter 2023. Next is Pacific Park Splash Pad project. We have a CDBG funding of $770,000. Scope includes replacement of current splash pad, winter, future with new splash and includes additional amenities. The current splash pad is 14 years old, and it has some damages and tears, and the scope of the work is to repair. Status of the project is the project drawings are 100% complete and resubmitted to LA County for approval. Project specifications are completed and being reviewed by City Legal Department. Project is expected to start in fall 2022 and completed in winter 2023. Okay, next is repiping project Essentia. This is one of our new project. The current structure is 11,500 square feet, Housing Office Department for Services and Administration, and a 45-bed shelter for homeless families and individuals. CDBG funding is $31,840. The project is to replace and repipe of all roof plumbing, which includes all water supply and drain pipes. Status of the project is agency to provide drawings to submit to Planning Department for environmental review. Contract agreement with city of Glendale is forthcoming. The project is expected to be completed by summer 2023. Okay, next, we have Hamilton House CIP Campbell Center. A licensed group home which provides permanent supportive housing to resident with intellectual and development disabilities. Hamilton House serves about 10 undupated extremely low-income adults ages between 21 to 72 with development disabilities. CDBG funding is $377,884,000. The project is basically to update, adding new roof, replacement of the existing windows, redoing the floors, the kitchen, make sure to be compliant with ADA. And then we have the front unit, anchor bolting, knee bracing, earthquake retrofitting, gas shut-off valves, electrical rewiring, replacing one 5-ton AC unit, exterior door, and some of the work that's, that needs repairs. Status of the project is agency to provide drawings and submit to Planning Department for environmental review. Contract agreement with the city of Glendale is forthcoming. The project is expected to be completed by fall 2023. Next is Lexington CIP Building, YWCA of Glendale and Pastina. YWCA Glendale and Pastina Lexington Campus Capital Improvement Project proposes project includes making upgrades and making improvements to building one, which is the original building constructed in 1939 and consists of approximately 13,880 square feet and two stories plus basement. The building is used as office space on both first and second floors and features a 2,500 square feet multipurpose auditorium. Okay, CDBG funding is $377,884. The scope is to replacement of basement electrical room equipment, replacement of the first floor rooms, ceiling tiles, insulation roof framing, replacement of first floor women's and men's restroom converted to accessibility. It's also to, to upgrade the playground, I'm sorry, the plywood sheeting, extend corridor finishes, Title 24 energy improvements for building one, exterior facade repair, protection, preservation, and painting of the building. Status of the project is agency to provide drawings and submit to Planning Department for environmental review. Contract agreement with city of Glendale is forthcoming. The project is expected to be completed by fall 2023. We have another project for Campbell Center. This is Alma House. Next slide. CDBG funding is $197,858. Scope includes replacement of kitchen cabinets, counter, replacement of backsplash, repairs of the floors, the... the um the ceiling, any other uh water damaged areas of the, of the, um, of the house. Uh it's also includes the earthquake retrofitting knee bracing underfloor crawl space. Status of the project is contract agreement with the City of Glendale is complete. Agency is finalizing specifications currently. Bidders uh conference is forthcoming. The project is expected to be completed by winter twenty twenty-two. Next, we have restroom renovation project, Home Inn and Art Main Campus. The main campus Athletic Center of Home Inn and Art uh Chapter was built in the nineteen sixties and is sixty-five thousand square feet with with thirty-five thousand square feet of facility space, serving about two thousand six hundred members annually. Facility used for basketball, volleyball, indoor soccer, gymnastics, martial arts and table tennis. Uh CDBG funding is two hun- two hundred six thousand five hundred eighteen dollars. Scope of the work includes six restrooms, upgrades, ADA compliance, uh replacement of underground drain line system, sixteen commercial water closets, uh wiring, GFCI plugs and switches, eight commercial exhaust fans and ducting system, gypsum board, uh finish finishing touches of the building. A status of the project is agency is working with architect to finalize specifications, drawings and uh submit to planning department for environmental review. Contract agreeing agreement with City of Glendale is forthcoming. The project is expected to be completed by summer twenty twenty-three. Next, we have first floor all-inclusive locker room, uh project YMCA of Glendale. The YMCA proposes to serve five hundred undupated adults, seniors and found members, including special needs adults ages between eighteen to twenty-two. The conversion will allow patrons who would normally use a woman's uh second floor locker room or the men's uh basement floor locker room, which can only be accessed by elevator to be able to have the first floor accessible for all. Uh this total CDBG, CDBG funding is five hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. This includes fundings from physical year twenty-one and uh fundings from physical year twenty-two. So the scope is just eleven individual enclosed private showers with flip bench, uh full height doors, hardware, individual enclosed uh toilet compartments, um upgrading tile, carpet flooring, uh finishing touches of the building. Um status of the update of the project is agency completed NEPA environmental review and is currently working on executing contracts with the city. Specifications will uh will be completed by second week in September twenty twenty-two. Bidding is anticipated in September, October twenty twenty-two. Completion of projects is expected in uh spring twenty twenty-three. Next, we have Catholic Choirs of Los Angeles. Catholic Choirs has phase one and phase two. Phase one includes Glendale Community Center Improvement Project. Phase two is uh Glendale Community Center Roofing Project. Uh for phase one, uh CDBG funding is two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh scope includes renovation and repair work for the interior and exterior of the existing building. For phase two, CDBG funding is hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. It includes replacement of a hundred existing uh lighting with energy-efficient LED lighting. Uh includes demolition and removal of existing roof, installation of new roof, metal flashing for vents and AC units. Status update, agency completion specifications. Bidding is anticipated in October twenty twenty-two. The project phase one and phase two are expected to be completed in winter twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Next, we have another of Home Inn and Art Chapter Roofing Project, Main Campus. The scope of the work is to replacement of three main areas of the roof at Main Campus. The image to the right is the existing condition of the roof. Uh CDBG funding is hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred seventy dollars. Status of the project is agency has submitted project specifications for review. Project is in environmental phase and awaiting SHPO approval to proceed. Project is expected to be completed by winter twenty twenty-two. Roofing and HVAC project are being completed together. Next, we have another uh project of the Home Inn and HVAC system. Um the image to the right shows the existing condition, which needs some repair works and the scope of the project is to replace seven existing damaged HVAC units. CDBG funding is ninety-five thousand one hundred thirteen dollars. Status, uh status of the project is uh agency has submitted um project specifications for review. Project is in environmental phase and awaiting SHPO approval proceed. Project is expected to be completed by winter twenty twenty-two. As mentioned before, roofing and HVAC of the Home Inn and projects are to be completed uh together. Next, we have another of Home Inn and Art Chapter Bleachers Project, Main Campus. As you can see, the image on the right, this is the existing bleachers. The scope of the work is to uh replacing existing bleachers with custom motorized retractable bleachers. CDBG funding is sixty thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars. Status of the project is agency is currently working with architect on project specifications. Project completed the environmental review phase. Agency is putting project on hold and uh prioritizing other CDBG uh projects, which requires improvements. Project is expected to be completed by spring twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions?
Uh Mr. Armenia?
I have a question regarding um the uh Home Inn and Men projects. So first of all, clarification, when it says winter twenty twenty-two, I assume we're talking about the months coming and not the months that passed?
Yes, the months coming.
Twenty twenty-two is just technically earlier. So that just gives them a few more months in terms of these projected completions. Is that realistic that that's gonna happen?
Uh Chair Garbien, members of the Advisory Committee, um Committee Member Armenian. We had anticipated that in winter of twenty twenty-two, they would be completing their uh project. Unfortunately, they now have activated the SHPO. The SHPO is, the building is over fifty years old. It's the State Historic Preservation Office of the State. And we are now waiting for that letter. The letter has been delayed. So as we, that letter is actually what we are waiting for. They are ready to go, unfortunately. We, there's not much we can do, we wait for our planners. I know um Erica Domian is the project manager overseeing this project. He does co- um he is in communication with the planning department weekly to see where the letter is and if um we need to do anything with the status of this project. But the sta- the project is basically ready to go. It's just, we're waiting for a letter.
All the projects?
Just this particular project because it's over fifty years old and it is gonna affect the integrity of the building, the outside of the building. For instance, the bleachers project would not affect the integrity of the building because it's the bleachers, it's inside. There's no changes happening because this is roofing and HVAC, it will affect the integrity of the project.
Yeah, and so my question was a little bit on the higher level in terms of all the projects. We've had challenges before because they've taken on so much. I appreciate the fact that they're, you know, trying to prioritize with the bleacher project, but I'm still concerned with the projections here in terms of all these projects either being winter twenty twenty-two or some say spring twenty twenty-three. So between those two dates, there's not a whole lot of time, so I kind of view those as together. And um, you know, they withdrew from funding requests last cycle and we're about to enter the next cycle before they've even completed any of these, it seems to me, is kind of where this is headed. So I, I was just flagging that and wanted to understand kind of how realistic these projections were. Whether, whether they have dependencies outside of their control or whether they're inside their control.
These are very good questions. This year, the committee is going to see an increase in CDEBG CIP projects that are gonna be moving forward and Public Social Services is basically now in the back burner because we've already spent down those funds. That being said, I know that Tomat is actually working on four current projects right now that are very anxious to get started. Doors are now open, COVID is now behind us and um both uh Tomar Kabanjin and Erica Domian are working respectively with their agencies to push these projects through. So we anticipate in the next three months, two projects, especially the YMCA. The YMCA should be ready to go in the next few weeks. So that's, that's two um pots of money right there. With the Home Inn and Men project, honestly, they really wanted to prioritize the four projects they have pending. They chose roofing and HVAC because there, there's a correlation between the two. That should be coming up next. As long as the SHPO arrives, we can move them forward. They've been working with their architect, they have an architect that um has been actually quite active with them. So they are moving forward, they want to proceed. They, that, those are that. We also have uh Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities also is ready to go, they're working on their specifications. So we have three agencies that are gonna move forward very quickly and you are gonna see that most likely in the March meeting when we come back, you're gonna see a lot more progress than we've had in the past two years because of the COVID pandemic and the shutdown of these um agency offices and facilities.
Yeah, that, that was the second part of my worries. I, I appreciate you addressing it, which is the pipeline is quite full here. Um and I was worried about how much staff can process without turning into a general contractor yourselves in the, in this process. So appreciate that. And then my last question is, I, I, maybe I missed it. Did you cover the solar panel project too or you're going to?
A solar panel has been completed. Yeah, this is only the um new project.
So to, to answer that question, the solar panel project on the construction site has been completed. They're literally just waiting for GWP to energize the system, to approve it, stamp it and energize the system. So on our end, the project is complete. We are holding a retention. I think they have about, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, about eighteen thousand?
It's about nineteen thousand, yes.
Nineteen thousand in retention. So once that pro- uh the system is energized, we get a notice of completion from LA County. We will um give them that check for nineteen thousand and they're ready to go. So that project is technically complete, it's just dependent on why uh the GWP uh offices.
This is GWP or is it LA County?
It's actually GWP.
Why is it taking so long?
Do you wanna give the intricacies of the?
Technical, please.
Okay, um Chair Garbien, uh Committee Member Armenian, I'll do my best to explain. It's all comes down to the energizing of the solar panels. Basically, the portal box that had, that they have to put in. It was not provided by um the Simmons Company that they were working with. So they had to kind of outsource and uh find a third party that will design it specifically for uh their, the ACF building. That's why it was taking a little bit, a little bit longer than it normally was, but that is on the verge of completion and GW, GWP is um the last um party that needs to initiate the energization of the building and that will be the final step.
Okay, so from, there was a tech, there are technical reasons for the delay is what I'm understanding.
The technical um reasons for delay was a few months beforehand. Now it's just on the GW part for energizing the uh the building.
Okay. All right. I guess we need to make some calls to get it done.
Anyone else?
Quick question, uh so I, on any of these projects, uh all the organizations, are we looking into additional uh extensions, timeframe? Potentially, because I know we have some certain timeframe with HUD. And then if there's all these extensions, then where are we gonna end up?
Committee Member of Edision, these projects are carryover projects, so every year they continue to carry over and until they expend the funds. But that being said, we have a timeliness issue and Ms. Alexanya knows very well because we've been going back with HUD. There is a timeliness issue with CBG. There's a certain timeframe that the US Treasury, not HUD, but the US Treasury, Treasury will come and they call it a power grab. They just grab the funds. So we want to be able to spend down those funds as soon as possible. We, they understand um that COVID was a, was a factor and they have given us a timeliness um report telling us that we are, we've been untimely in spending down our funds, our collected pot of money. That being said, we are pushing forward, not only with city projects, but with our community agencies to move them forward. So our fear is not so much our budget so much, but our, the timeliness factor with the US Treasury. That's our fear. We just wanna move it forward. I will say this, we still have our money for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. That's kind of on the horizon and we're, we're evaluating that, but that's not too much money where we're to we're, we're kind of like going year by year now. As long as we can push these four or five projects through this year, which I'm quite certain our team will be able to do, I think we'll give, it'll give us a break and get us back on our feet. And from what I've been told by HUD, it's not just our municipality, it's municipalities throughout the United States that are facing this problem. The shutdown really did affect everyone.
All right, thank you.
Any other question?
Along the same lines, uh the Pelencani Project, um you said that it's at permitting. The project is almost five hundred thousand dollars, but is to be completed fall of twenty twenty-two. I'm assuming that's also not a realistic completion date because we're in fall of twenty twenty-two already.
Chair Garbien, members of the commission, uh committee, Committee Member Manukian. Basically, the uh, the permitting has been approved. Finance went out to bid for the construction portion of the projects. They're gonna award the project to one of the contractors, I believe it was the lowest bidder, and they're gonna start within the next three to four weeks. So we're looking at ninety-day construction period. So by the end of, fall goes well, by November, early December, we should have it completed.
The winter.
Winter, beginning of winter, yes.
Thank you.
Is it, did you have any question?
No.
Back to our, I think, uh, was it the bleachers I said two thousand twenty-three, is that correct?
It was the, the bath, um restrooms and locker rooms, I think.
That's like, when do we fund that, nineteen or something?
The restrooms or?
The bleachers.
The bleachers.
Two thousand nineteen twenty.
And that's a simple project and I don't think any COVID effect or historical effect. I mean, what's the delay on that, do we know?
They, they say that they are delaying it because of prioritization managing the other projects.
Okay.
They are actually going to prioritize and there's another reason, because they are waiting for a subcontractor. The, the bleachers are specially made bleachers, they have to outsource it to a company outside of California and it's made to, it's specific, like the specifications are very detailed and from what we know, it will take up to eight to nine months to get it to California and to install it. So they have their current bleachers and they wanted to spend down the funding. For instance, the restroom project is important to them, of course, the roof and the HVAC. So that's how they prioritize.
And uh as far as the park, the four hundred thousand loan we got for uh, was it for the Pacific Park? No, um wasn't there a loan recei- we, we applied for a loan through HUD for four hundred thousand, was it that it?
Chair Garbien, members of the committee, we actually did not apply for that loan, the section one oh eight loan that you are referring to for the um, for the project, because the city decided that it would be best, it was for the Fremont. Um I believe it was for Fremont Park project, yes. Based on city council direction, when we took the report to city council, it was directed that we should look at other funding sources because the section one oh eight loan, the interest rate that we thought we were gonna get was not going to be at that rate when we talked to HUD. And so council's direction was to look for other funding opportunities and we ended up requesting funds from the city's general fund through Mezures. And um we are most probably still gonna be short on that project, so we're waiting for the bids to come back to know what the realistic cost of the project is, to then figure out what the um remaining funding sources will be for that project. But um I think the committee had um identified, setting aside four hundred thousand in the current year originally and then four hundred thousand next funding cycle in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four to apply towards the project. But we, because we were short on funds for um community projects, if you recall, for this last funding um round, we decided to reduce the funding from the twenty-two, twenty-three CDBG portion and apply that to the community CIP projects. We still kept the four hundred for the twenty-three, twenty-four, which will be the next funding cycle, but realistically, I think we'll have to reevaluate the project budget once we have the, the bids in and also um come back and talk to you about the timeliness issue that Ms. Kavarian was referring to because that is a serious issue, we do need to spend down the funds. We just didn't have enough time to do the analysis on our end as staff to bring back a complete report for you. So most probably at the next committee meeting, we'll have a complete report, which will go over the funding, funding identified for each of the projects and um recommend some, some shifts from one project to the next as necessary to try to spend down the funds so that the Treasury doesn't go, uh, the Treasury doesn't come back and take the funds for the ones that are funded with um old funding. So we might look at swapping funding sources, but we're also trying to do some research with HUD to see if that's even going to make a difference and or push through. a difference and/or push through on some of those projects to be able to spend down the funds. There's two issues at hand. One is the 1.5 times the annual allocation, which is the challenge. But the other one is how early on we receive the funds from HUD. So the, the year in which we appropriated the funds to these projects. So there's two different issues and we're hoping to bring back a complete report. So we could look at, you know, here are all the projects, here are the years that they're funded, here's the status. And, you know, staff's recommending we make these shifts or taking direction from you if you don't think that recommendation is ideal. But also evaluating our projects like the Pacific Artificial Turf project, which is no longer going to happen based on council direction not to use artificial turf. So that project for sure that that's already over a million dollars that we need to figure out how to spend down because that project's not going to happen. And so the question is, do we put that money into community projects? Or do we put that money into an existing city projects like the natural turf if it's an allowed project through HUD? Because there's a distinction between renovation and maintenance. And so we're right now trying to figure out through HUD whether this would be considered, like this being the artificial, the Pacific Park project, the baseball field project. We as staff think it's a renovation, but they're looking at reconstruction, I should say, because we're literally tearing it all apart and putting it back. But they're looking at it potentially as maintenance because it's an existing facility that already exists. You're not adding additional use. So we're kind of going back with HUD and staff and our staff to try to figure out that specific definition of what's maintenance versus a renovation and technicalities on whether that project qualifies. So if it qualifies, then we would come back to the committee and ask to reappropriate the funds from a Pacific Park Artificial Turf project to a Pacific Park Natural Turf renovation project. If not, then we'd have to find somewhere else to put that fund, those funds to be able to spend it down quickly. So we're hoping that at the next meeting, we'll have a little bit more information to bring back a complete report and get direction from the committee on how to best spend down those funds. But these are great questions, committee member Armenian, that you're asking because timeliness is becoming an issue. So in the next funding cycle, I think we all need to do a better job of asking the agencies and ourselves internally whether we're going to realistically be able to start and complete these projects. Because if there's a project, for example, if we're splitting the funds 200, 200, 200, but it's sitting with everybody because of X, Y, or Z reasons, but there's a project, if you gave them a million, they could do it and be done with it in a year. Maybe we look at funding, funding those types of projects in order to give the existing agencies time to complete the existing project. So these are things I think we need to probably keep in mind for the next funding cycle as we look at the capital improvement projects. But also to answer your question, yes, we will need to issue extensions for these projects because if we don't complete them by the end of December, I believe it goes through December, a lot of the contracts, we'll have to do another extension to give these agencies enough time to be able to complete the projects.
Is it my recollection that the extensions, I know earlier you said there's no really extension from HUD, but treasury could step in and grab it. But I remember there was a one or two-year or one or two-time extension. Is that out the window? They don't do that anymore? We don't have that deadline anymore or?
Chair Garibian, when Ms. Alexsanya mentions the extension, she's talking about the contract itself with the city. We've done numerous extensions with our contracts, with our agencies and our, and the city, the extensions that we've done. But with the HUD and US Treasury, there really is no extension. I think there's a period of performance and if you don't meet, and I want to say seven-year period of performance, if you don't meet it, then the US Treasury will come in, they call it a US Treasury grab. And they do it on September 30th.
But we still have the city-to-agency extension timeframes?
Yes.
Which is how long?
Well, it depends on each contract. So what we're doing now with our CIP contracts, we used to do one-year contracts. We realized that's just not feasible because we're just going back and forth with our legal office. So now what we're doing is we're doing a two-year contract. So we know that it'll take a year to get the environmental planners onboard architect specs, and then another year of a cushion to get the construction done, get the agency paid, and then do a notice of completion. So that's pretty much what we've been doing now. It seems to be working.
And if extension needed after the end of the second year for, is there a timeframe of extension you guys having or like one more year extension or?
We do have to justify that to our legal office of why we're doing an additional amendment. The question has come up, but we always tell them that, well, we've had COVID as the main reason and shutdowns and whatnot. So that's basically what we've been telling our legal department and we move forward with those amendments.
Thank you.
Some agencies have had three, four amendments.
Thank you. I just have a quick clarification because seven years seems very generous to me as far, you know, to, to perform. So the, the treasury comes in and sweeps in at that point, seven years?
That is correct.
Okay, that's more than enough time, I think. And we've got to encourage and maybe?
We, we do have to take into consideration, not all the funding is appropriated to one agency. For instance, if an agency completes their project and they have maybe $100,000 sitting there, we will come back to the committee and ask to reappropriate those funds. If we reappropriate another 100,000 from let's say 2016, then we have trouble because that's really 2016 money, even though it's being appropriated into 2023, for instance. That's where the, that's where the delicate, the delicate nature of the situation is. And that's how, what we're assessing right now.
The rub, as they say. So then should we not have policies and procedures that say, let's not, let's do five years when we talk about our, you know, the, what do you call it, the grants that we offer? And that way, we have an additional two years to re- reapportion?
Chair, members of the committee, committee member, Kenyanis Gabrielle, and to be fair, I think the agencies are not at risk right now with the, the US Treasury. It's actually a city project. If you look at the spreadsheet that we have, it's the funds that were appropriated in 2016, 17, and 2017, 18. So right now, the two projects that are funded with those funds are the Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure. And that project has taken longer than expected on the city side because it required county health permits. And so that process of back and forth has taken a whole lot longer than we had all hoped for. So realistically, I don't think our agencies are, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kavarian, but I don't think the agency projects are at risk. But that is a good policy decision to make if that's what the board, the committee wants to do as, as it relates to agency-funded projects. If we're looking to see that you've, you will be able to complete it within three years or four years or whatever that number is. And if you are a year or two into your project and you still haven't completed it, then maybe you're not eligible to come back for additional funding for future projects. I mean, that's something for you as a committee to consider and, and, you know, we can add in as, as a limitation in, in a policy way so that the agencies know that if I already have funding for, for a project that's taken me three years to do and I'm still not done, I shouldn't go back to the committee for additional funding. But in, to be fair to the agencies, I think the projects that are, the project that is at risk right now would be the city's Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure project. And that's because of the splash pad and the, the health permits required for the underground tank for the reclaimed water because of health permit changes. So that process has taken a whole lot longer. And that's one thing that we need to, we are trying to evaluate as staff and say, you know, if we're not going to be able to complete this, then in order to spend down the funds, we need to figure out a way to at least purchase the equipment and be able to store it in order for us to be able to do the job so that we're spending down those funds. As long as we're spending down the money, you know, HUD's not going to care. So there's no limitation on when the project is complete, but we need to have spent down those funds. Obviously, it will cost us more to store the equipment. So we don't have to want to go down that road. But, you know, if, if it comes down to it, instead of losing the money, we have to look for some other alternatives to be able to spend down the funds until the project is able to pull the permits necessary to go into construction and complete. So I just wanted to be upfront about that, that it's really not an agency project. It's actually a city project that's, that kind of has that risk right now with the, with the treasury. Now, the timeliness is all of us together, whether it's a city project or a community project. Because if the city doesn't spend down our funds and the agencies don't spend down their funds collectively, we're, we might potentially go over that 1.5 times the annual allocation limit. But, but the treasury deadline coming due is more so a city project. And that's what we need to figure out is how to either spend down those funds or how to reappropriate them. And even if we reappropriate them, I think that's what we're trying to clarify. I don't, not sure that it would make a difference because the deadline is September 30th, the funds have to be spent that were issued in 2016, 2017. So unless you're reappropriating it to a project that's about to complete, like adding additional funds or swapping out the funds. And those are the things we're trying to evaluate and hopefully bring back a complete report at the next meeting, either with a plan to spend down the funds or a plan to re-appropriate them to other projects in order to allow us to spend down the funds. But of course, if it requires, you know, an amendment to the annual action plan, that takes time. And so we don't really have that much time. So we'll hopefully have a...
No, thank you for the clarification. But I do think it's a policy that we, we should look at when we're doing our social services. We, we take a good look at what did they do, did they complete their funding the previous year or et cetera? So it's something important so that we don't get into the possibility of losing.
I think that's something we probably have to, as she said, probably put it as a policy so it will be equal to everyone versus who, let me say, to get it or not get it because they could have justification why it got delayed and open up a can of worms. But as a policy, put it up there that it's everybody have so much timeframe, makes it so much easier. But as far as city and LA County Health Department, you don't know anyone down there?
COVID hasn't helped, especially with LA County.
Policy certainly can help, but I'm just also worried about the, I see, I see a workflow issue here. And this backlog does not bode well. We're seeing 10% inflation. So when a project takes two, three years to get off the ground, the price is shifting on you really fast. And that's not going to get under control anytime soon. So, and then, and then this also backs up into city staff, right? There's only so many hours in the day. And I'm, I'm actually very worried about this backlog. Even clearing this backlog out when we're about to go through another funding cycle in a few months worries me in terms of, you know, how do you provide more money? Some of these organizations are probably going to come back at us. You know, we kind of did a one-off thing with Home and It Men and they, they actually withdrew, right? Because they realize, after, after, we raised it though, if you remember at a meeting, I worry about them taking on too much. They agreed, they pulled back. And here we are, they still have four to five projects still to get done in the same timeframe that we're going to be doing funding again. So, you know, I worry about the workflow throughput capacity of these organizations' staff on our side to meet these sorts of deadlines. So it's something for us to consider whether or not there are certain types of projects that perhaps can move faster, that we ought to also filter and think through, at least for this coming year, as we think about the funding so that we're not just adding a whole batch of more projects that are going to take years to bring to life. So I, I'm just thinking and putting the idea out there that as we go into and putting out the, we're going to be asking for, you know, RFPs, whether or not there should be some things we build into it in terms of types of projects or even, you know, the policies that were suggested by other committee members in terms of if you've already got four projects in the pipeline, or if you have an X amount already in the pipeline, you know, you don't get to apply until you're cleaning that out. You know, those are the types of things that can help. But I still think we have a workflow issue here that it feels like an uphill battle. And I don't want to get to the point where, you know, HUD is sweeping the funds because any good CFO will tell you that money you don't use that's being left on the table, it happens in my company all the time. This, throughout the year, they come sweeping money from, from your budgets because they see you're not using it. So that's, that's a natural accounting practice, I think, to do that. And just imagine for the government to be doing that across the country. So I don't know what, we need to think about what's in our control that we can affect and accelerate, and then think about what are the things that aren't in our control that we have to adjust for or anticipate, such as the park project that you mentioned, that we can, you know, adjust so that we don't lose any funds. I'd hate to get to a point where we lost funds because we just didn't kind of keep on it. Thank you.
Nobody else? Okay. Yes.
I agree that across the board, we have to kind of push all of the projects. But I did want to clarify that the three projects from the Home and It Men are a chapter. One is for, for the restrooms and locker rooms that is supposed to be completed, I think, summer of 2023. And the other two are delayed by the ship.
Yeah, but just so you know.
Calling that out as an example. But across the board, I think we should be pushing everybody to move faster. But with your, you know, just with those three projects, they do seem to have control of the situation and moving forward.
Yeah, just so you know, historically, they've given dates and they keep slipping. So this is multiple times where we've seen the goalposts being moved, which is why I cited them and which is why they actually voluntarily withdrew their proposals last year so that they can actually address this as opposed to piling on more projects. And they've actually noted that themselves, that they have a capacity challenge. So I'm glad. I hope they, I hope they achieve this. But like the restroom project, we've been hearing about it for many, many years. So we just want to get it done, you know, because it's, at the end of the day, those, you know, the user, the users of these facilities are the ones who are waiting for these renovations to, to happen, I think. And, and they've been brought to us as a priority saying that they're in dire shape. And that's why we've funded them. But then, you know, for then, for that to sit for years doesn't match the urgency with which they were brought to us. So that's why I want to stay consistent with that. I'm not saying it's anyone's fault. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying, we just got to get a hold of this because you'll notice that from year to year, these target, that's why I asked about the target dates being realistic, because we hear these target dates and then they slip. So when I hear winter 2022, I'm like, when is winter 2022? If winter 2022 is three months from now, then I don't know how this is going to get done in winter 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, no other questions?
Next is item 5B, CDBG fiscal year 2021, 2022, Public Social Services Programs Year End Performance and Expenditure Report.
Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee, staff has prepared two reports and two PowerPoints for the committee related to public social services. Eric will be presenting the CDBG entitlement report first, and then he'll conclude with the CDBG Cares Act, CV3 Funding for 21, 22. Eric.
Thank you, Ms. Kavarian. Good afternoon, Chair Garibian, CDBG Advisory Committee members and city staff. I will be presenting fiscal year 2021, 2022, Public Social Services Year End Performance and Expenditure Race Report. Okay. Catholic Charities of Los Angeles, Glendale Community Center Loaves and Fishes Program, proposed number to be served was 60. Agency served 66 households and the agency spent down the entire funding of $41,409. The program outcomes included 66 households served by the program have received aid in the form of goods from the Food Pantry Rental Assistance Program and or Utility Assistance Program within three months of entering the program. The second outcome was 28 households served by the program have maintained an active link to auxiliary services, including mainstream resources, health and mental health, behavioral health, substance abuse, employment services, and legal services. Their goal was 12. Next, we have the Glendale Youth Alliance, the Youth Employment Program, proposed number was 25 youth and the agency served 25. The agency was near to spend down their full funding of $25,299. They spent down 97%. Program outcomes include 25 youth have earned income by working a minimum of 100 hours. earned income by working a minimum of 100 hours, and also 25 have been referred to community agencies based on individual needs. Home Again LA, formerly known as Family Promise of the Verdigos, their Housing Support for for homeless families program, proposed number was 30 households to be served, and the actual number served was 55 households. Funds awarded was $10,299, and the agency spent down all their funding. Program outcomes include 39 unduplicated households have enrolled into crisis housing within the first 30 days of connecting to Family Promise of the Verdigos. Their goal was 15. Um, and second, 31 unduplicated households have transitioned into stable housing within 12 months. Up next is the Door of Hope Mental Health and Case Management Services for Survivors of Domestic Violence. Proposed number to be served was 32 participants, agency served 28, funded award, funds awarded was $20,299, and the agency spent down nearly all of it. Um, program outcomes include 28 adults, children, and teens served by the program reported improved mental health as indicated by decreased anxiety and/or depression in adults, and increased socio-emotional growth and coping skills in children and teens by way of assessments. Um, the goal was 24. Uh, up next, 15 adults served by the program have increased their income and/or savings as measured by case managers on a quarterly basis. Verdigo Hills Council, Boys Scouts of America Scout Reach Program, proposed number was 35 to be served, and the actual number served was 57 youth. Uh, the agency was able to spend down their full funding of $10,299. Program outcomes include 57 youth, um, given scholarship not to exceed 200, $450 per month. That may include registration, uniform, supplies, and/or handbook. Uh, the goal was 35. Um, also, 55 youth have achieved rank advancement by completing coursework and have been presented with an official patch over the course of the program, and the goal was 21. Up next, we have the Armenian Relief Society of Western USA, their Community Outreach Project. Uh, agency proposed to serve 153 individuals. They were able to serve 162. Um, their total funding was $50,299, and they spent down every dollar. Um, the program outcomes include 60 seniors completed the ESL class curriculum and increased their English language proficiency. And second, 26 individuals who received employment services secured employment above the minimum wage. Uh, up next, the Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools, better known as CASP, their Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling, proposed number to be served was 44, and the agency served 40. Uh, funds awarded was $30,299, and they spent down the full amount. Um, program outcomes include 32 students have shown significantly reduced incidence of aggressive behavior by way of pre and post tests. Um, also, 32 students have shown significant improvement in following directions and academic responsibility by way of psychologist's observation of students' progress. Next, we have the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, their STEM Academy, uh, proposed number to be served was 30 students, and they served 29. Uh, funds awarded was $10,299, and they spent down nearly all of it. Uh, program outcomes include 15 students who have participated in the robotics classes have completed the program. The goal was 12. Um, and another outcome of theirs was 14 students have participated in the Science Olympiad, and that was held in March. The Armenian Culture Association, HAMUSKAN, uh, their intergenerational experiences program, uh, their proposed number to be served was 30 participants, and the actual served was 35. Uh, the funds awarded was $15,299, and they were very close to spending, spending down the entire full. They were able to spend 96%. Um, the program included two outcomes, which is 18 participants have demonstrated improved abilities and confidence after attending a minimum of 15 classes. And second, 21 participants have completed the program and received a certificate of completion. Asensia Homeless Outreach Program, proposed number to be served was 30 individuals. The agency was able to serve 31. Uh, funds awarded was $18,355, and they spent down the full amount. Uh, 28 homeless individuals contacted by Homeless Outreach have been enrolled in Asensia's Access Center, and 21 homeless individuals enrolled in the Access Center have accessed mainstream resources such as food, stamps, job training, employment, substance abuse treatment, and healthcare. And I believe, lastly, we have the Housing Rights Center, Glendale Fair Housing Program, proposed number to be served was 500. The agency was able to serve 356 households. Um, the agency was able to spend down the full amount of $10,299. Um, program outcomes include two house Housing Rights Center workshops, um, have been hosted for the city of Glendale, where 85% of attendees have rated the workshop as being useful, and fair housing and four fair housing complaints have been filed and successfully conciliated for Glendale residents. Oh, never mind, we have one more. Uh, Glendale College Foundation, Food for Thought Food Pantry, uh, proposed number to be served was 30 individuals, and they met their number and served 30 individuals. Uh, funds awarded was $10,299, and that should be 100% expended. That's an error on my end. Sorry about that. Um, outcomes, 30 unduplicated individuals requested food pantry assistance, have received food staples within one week of their request, and also 30 unduplicated individuals have received assistance with CalFresh benefits application and/or received hygiene products within 30 days of their first visit. Um, okay. Um, Chair Garibian, um, CDBG Advisory Committee members, that was the regular entitlement PowerPoint presentation. Before moving on to CDBG CV cares, I would like to um find out if you guys have any questions that I could answer to my best ability.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you so much for presentation. Any questions?
No, I think that almost what 90 some percent of it achieved their goals. So that's very good.
Almost everybody's 100% close to. Thank you for presentation. Let's move on.
Of course. Let's move on. Okay. Um, I will be also presenting the fiscal year 2021, uh, CDBG CARES Act CV3 Public Social Services Year End Performance and Expenditure Rates Report. Moving on, we have the Armenian Bar Association, the pro bono legal services in light of COVID-19. Uh, proposed number to be served was 55 individuals, and actual number served was 57. Uh, the agency was very close to spending down the entire $75,000 that they were awarded. Um, program outcomes include 50 persons who received one-on-one legal counseling, have received resolution to their matter by June 30th, uh, 2022, and their goal was 35. Uh, also, seven webinar workshops were hosted, and survey evaluations and polls demonstrated that 80% of attendees rated the workshops as being useful. Next, we have the Armenian General Benevolent Union, respond, agent, better known as AGBU, responding to the negative effects of the COVID-19 on youth through mentorship. Uh, proposed number was 50 students, actual number served was 14. Uh, funds awarded was $70,000, and the agency only spent down 53%. Um, program outcomes include 14 students who were matched with a mentor within one month of entering the program. Uh, their goal was 50. 14 students developed positive interpersonal relationships with their peers by participating in at least five structured and coordinated activities. The Armenian Relief Society of Western USA, um, ARS COVID-19 Relief and Recovery Program, the proposed number to be served was 500, and the agency served 584. The agency was very close to spending down the $180,000 awarded to them. Um, program outcomes include 192 individuals had their food needs met within one business day from the food pantry services, and also 262 individuals received services to obtain their vaccination through onsite vaccination clinics or referrals to other vaccine locations, testing site connections, increased education and awareness of social service resources. Um, they were being provided PPE uh, equipment uh, within one to one to two business days, um, that were referred from outside agencies as well. Uh, next, we have the Campbell Center Supported Employment Program, proposed number to be served was 25, agency served 13, funds awarded was 113, $101,131, and they spent down 48%. Um, program outcomes include four individuals retain employment after six months, and 12 individuals participating in digital training completed the trainer's curriculum. Um, up next, we have the Catholic Charities of Los Angeles, uh, COVID-19 Window Model Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry. Proposed number to be served was 250 individuals, and 415 individuals were served. Uh, funds awarded was 140,000, and the agency was able to spend down the full amount. Um, outcomes include 415 unduplicated persons received aid in the forms of goods from the food pantry bi-monthly for up to 12 months. Also, 55 unduplicated persons were referred to additional COVID-19-related services such as case management and received rental or utility assistance within three months of entering the program. Um, we have the Door of Hope Children's Enrichment, Children's Enrichment Socio-Emotional Support and Food Assistance for Survivors of Domestic Violence. Um, proposed number to be served was 85, uh, agency served 56, uh, they spent down the full amount of $50,000 that was awarded to them. Program outcomes include 31 children demonstrated age-appropriate soc- socio-emotional growth and development such as measured by meeting positive socio-emotional outcomes, excuse me, after six months in the program or at program completion using a pre and post test. Um, the second outcome, we have 89 unduplicated individuals sheltered at the onsite program location, had consistent access to nutritious foods by way of grocery gift cards um throughout the grant term. Okay. Um, Home Again LA, um, once again, formerly known as Family Promise of the Verdigos, their COVID Can't Stop Us From Housing Program, proposed to serve 30 households, and they were able to serve 33 households. Um, funds awarded was 117,250, and they spent down nearly 95% of their funding. Um, outcomes include 25 households secured housing within three months of entering the program, and 11 households increased their annual household income by the culmination of the program. Glendale College Foundation Fresh Success Unemployment and Training Response to COVID-19 Program, proposed 200 individuals to be served, and 226 individuals were actually served throughout the fiscal year. Uh, funds awarded was $90,000, and they spent down nearly um everything that was awarded to them. Program outcomes include 182 participants completed at least 10 workshops and/or case management sessions combined, and 190 program participants successfully completed all classes associated with the education component of the Fresh Success Employment and Training Program. Um, Glendale Youth Alliance, GYA COVID-19 Relief Program, proposed number to be served was 40, agency served 28. Uh, funds awarded was $60,000, and the agency was able to spend down 78%. Program outcomes include 28 youth were provided with direct assistance in the form of gas cards, clothing, and/or utility payment within six months of entering the program. Um, second, 28 youth participating in the program received case management services for one year uh straight. Salvation Army, Glendale Corpse, uh, the People's Choice Market, proposed number to be served was 700 participants, and they actually served 1,784 participants, and funds awarded was 50,000, and they were able to meet, and they were able to spend down the entire funding. Um, outcomes include 1,783 participants were from extremely low-income and moderate-income households, and 763 participants of the People's Choice Market were elderly, 65 years or older. Um, I believe YWC of Glendale and Pasadena is our last slide. Glendale Strong Families Network, that's the name of the program, um, proposed number to be served was 40 households, and actual number served was 38. Funds awarded was 120,000, and they spent down nearly 90% of the funding. Um, program outcomes include 19 parents reported improvement in a minimum of three out of the five protective factors at the end of year one, and 19 households reported improvement in their children's pro-social behavior at the end of, excuse me, at the end of year one. And um, that concludes my presentation. Um, CDBG Committee, should you have any questions? Please feel free.
So one question. So I noticed, like, for example, there's a couple where the the funds were not expended fully.
Yes.
So, for example, AGBU. So what happens? Or when, is there a timeframe in which they have to spend it, or is that, is the timeframe done now?
Uh, committee member Armenian, that's a very good question. These are CARES Act funds, not traditional entitlement funds. There is a pot of money, again, has a period of performance of five years, not seven. And with the CARES Act funds, um, we will be coming back to the committee to see if we can repurpose those, um, the the money that's been returned. We're basically working with our finance department currently to close out last year and see what we have left um to uh work with. So that being said, there will be, I'd like to say, at least $80,000 possibly to reprogram for the future.
So for example, AGBU is returning the amounts that they have not spent.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, I had the same question. Now that is repurposing, I I know on the regular funds, on the CIPs or uh, not the, on the social funds, when we return it, that goes to CIP. So would that be this uh, this case also?
That is an excellent question. It will not be the case because CARES Act funding is very different. It has to go towards um the PPR tieback, which is prevent, prepare for, or respond to coronavirus. As you noticed, a lot of these agencies weren't able to meet their goals, objectives, or spend down their expenditures because they're programs that have to be created on the fly. Um, they're not long-term established programs, as you noticed from the first um presentation that Eric had made. So that being said, we still need to look at these numbers when we revisit that $80,000 or whatever that number might be um to allocate, because again, there's a timeframe we have to meet. Uh, 2024, where our goal is to spend down all those funds by 2024, July 30th, I believe, 2024. But I will have a report ready for the committee so everyone is aware of what the CARES Act fund requirements are versus regulars, uh, CDBG entitlement.
Are we anticipating more CARES Act funds coming in?
CARES Act funding is
Done.
It's done. We're done with CARES Act.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. So, um, and also, all of them had to have performed by June 30th, 2022. Okay, so the last two pages, I think that was just a typo, right? I think they say 2021. It's it's 2022, correct?
It's most likely a typo.
Okay.
On the
All right. That's all. Thank you.
I have a question.
On the game.
Yeah, sorry. Um, for the repurposing, I noticed that two programs were standout in overperforming or over-serving, the Armenian Relief Society and the Salvation Army, um, because they've expended 100%, but they've surpassed their expectations. For the repurposing, is it possible to direct the funds to the ones who are outperforming? Or do we have to start the process all over again in terms of applications and consideration?
Committee member Manukin, it would be best to start fresh with a new contract because the new contract will include the outcomes, the goals, and um the requirements for the next fiscal year. And we're actually, if I may, sorry, if I may, we are considering, because CARES Act funding is very particular, we are considering possibly, depending on when we get our numbers in from finance, but there is talks that we could maybe do an 18-month grant rather than a 12-month grant to really spend down these funds and give the agencies a chance to build up their program, um, because it is very difficult to start a program, again, just from scratch because of the COVID pandemic.
I want to just congratulate most of these agencies. They've done a great job. They even, some of them surpassed their minimum. So great. And thank you so much, Eric. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess what's next?
Next is item 5C, Homeless Services.
Next is item five C, Homeless Services Report, City of Glendale's twenty-twenty-two Homeless Point in Time Count Results.
Chair Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee, uh, Ms. Arsenet Alex, uh, sorry, Ms. Arsenet, I was looking at Ms. Alexonia. Arsenet Asian is here to present, um, the homeless count. This was a request made by city, by our, um, C D B G Advisory Committee at our last meeting. I think Committee Member Armenian, you had requested a homeless report, homeless services report. Um, Ms. Asian is our homeless services manager, and I'm going to just turn it over to her. Thank you for your patience.
Of course. Thank you so much for having me here today. It's a pleasure. Chair Garibian, members of the Advisory Committee, I have a presentation for you today, um, highlighting our twenty-twenty-two homeless point in time count. Um, we're going to go over, I'm going to provide a brief overview of the count, why we count, um, some key findings, recommendations, and then that'll conclude my presentation today. So, each year, as the continuum of care, City of Glendale Continuum of Care, we are required to conduct a homeless count, a sheltered and an unsheltered homeless count here in Glendale. It is a requirement, um, that is established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for all of the C O Cs who request continuum of care program funds. It's very similar to the C D B G funds that we apply for each year, except it's for homeless programming, and it's roughly anywhere between two-point-six million, two-point-seven million each year. We also do the count because we want to understand local trends in our community. We want to know what's going on in the population, and we want to be able to plan better and strategize to meet the needs and some gaps in services. We conducted the count this year on February twenty-fifth. We did a morning count and a night count. Um, the Glendale Police Department provides support for, um, our C O C. We have a group of volunteers from local organizations, hospitals, an incredible group, um, that comes out and helps us do this count each year, year after year. Uh, we also work with our local service providers, emergency shelters, interim housing programs, local hospitals, uh, to pull in support to capture our sheltered and unsheltered populations. This year revealed a total of two hundred and twenty-five homeless individuals and families in our community. This two hundred and twenty-five includes both the sheltered and the unsheltered population. And when comparing the numbers to our twenty-twenty count, uh, we did see a thirty-three percent increase, unfortunately, in our homeless population. In twenty-twenty-one, we did not have the unsheltered count due to COVID. Um, we were not able to do this. And if I may, one thing I do want to add, we are required to do this count each year, um, during the last ten days of January. This year, as a result of COVID, um, increase in the numbers, HUD did grant us an exception to have the count in February, just as a safety measure, um, but we will revert back to, um, conducting this count on, uh, during the last ten days of January. The count, did, we did count a hundred and three, um, unsheltered homeless folks in our streets. Um, we also had a hundred and twenty-two, so we kind of broke this out so that you're able to tell the sheltered versus the unsheltered population. We did see an increase of thirty-seven percent in our sheltered population, unsheltered population. We had seventy-five in twenty-twenty, and we came across a hundred and three. Um, we also, uh, did see an increase in our sheltered population from ninety-four to a hundred and twenty-two. Now, yes, there was an increase in both populations, but there is some good news here. Um, it's nice to see that we are able to help more people in our programs, and as a result of that, we're seeing an increase in our sheltered population. Um, as a result of COVID, um, the CARES Act funding, uh, the homeless services team also received funding from CARES Act, and we were able to increase a lot of our sheltered programs, our rapid rehousing programs, homeless prevention programs, and as well as offering hotel-motel vouchers to our clients. So, that increase is a representation of an increase in our, uh, sheltered programs. Seventy-four clients that we came across or individuals were from our emergency shelter here in Glendale, and forty-eight were in our transitional housing program. Um, these forty-eight are primarily domestic violence victims. We do have an organization, Door of Hope, that has a transitional housing program that operates here in Glendale, and the forty-eight individuals that were captured here were D V, um, clients that we service in Glendale. Another thing to note is our chronically homeless population. So, HUD has a specific definition for chronically homeless. Um, when we say chronically homeless, these individuals or families have been homeless continuously for one year, or have had three or four episodes of, four episodes of homelessness within a three-year span, and also have a disabling condition. This is a specific definition that's set forth by HUD, and it is important for us to keep account and capture our chronically homeless population because HUD's federal strategic plan, you know, one of their, the national objectives is for us to reduce chronic homelessness in our communities, and that is exactly what we're doing here. As you noticed, there was a sixty-three percent decline in our chronically homeless population, a fifty-seven percent in our chronically homeless sheltered population. So, that is, um, important for us to capture. We're getting more people off the streets, the high-acuity clients off the streets and into some type of, uh, temporary interim or permanent housing program. Age demographics, uh, of the two hundred and twenty-five that we accounted for, twenty percent were under the age of eighteen, thankfully, none unaccompanied. These are children who are in, with families, um, and seventy-eight percent were twenty-five years of age or older, two percent were between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. This is the transitional age youth group, and fourteen percent were over sixty-five years of age. One thing that we did notice is that there is this gradual increase in the elderly population, the homeless elderly population, which is something that we do want to keep an eye on. In total, there was a forty-two percent increase in adults and five percent increase in children and families. And this, I'm sorry, nine percent increase since twenty, uh, seventy-one out of two hundred and twenty-five, thirty-two, uh, persons and families with children. Um, this is a nine percent increase since twenty-twenty-two, which is another thing that we also want to keep an eye on, is we are noticing an increase in our homeless families and some who are now qualifying as chronically homeless. There was a small portion, about two-point-nine percent of the responses, respondents indicated that they were veterans. This is another objective that we have, local and national objective. We want to reduce the number of homeless veterans in our community, and we only had three that identified as veterans, which is a sixty-three percent decrease since twenty-twenty-two in our, I'm sorry, three in our unsheltered population. In our sheltered, we had four. Three out of the four were chronically homeless, and three out of the four were male, one, um, identified as female. And so, we are working very closely also, keeping an eye on our veteran pop, veteran population in Glendale, homeless population. Um, we do, I'm sorry, I'm quickly trying not to go through these sites quickly, but we do have a comprehensive report that we actually posted on our website, which really further breaks down these numbers, and it provides a really neat, uh, description of what we do, the types of programs we offer. So, if you're, anyone is interested, um, we can, we're happy to share that comprehensive report as well. Um, some key findings in homelessness in Glendale for the first time. We had thirty-three out of the fifty-five unsheltered count respondents, um, about fifty-nine percent became homeless in Glendale. Uh, three out of the fifty-six did not provide, uh, information. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, and I think this is important to mention, is when we do these surveys, these are electronic surveys that are completed when we come across the individuals and families, and we do not push any of, of the individuals that we come across to answer these questions. So, a lot of the information that we pull and a lot of the data that we gather is based on the responses that we receive. Some do, uh, answer the questions, and some unfortunately do not feel comfortable, so we go based on what we are able to gather on the night of the count. Some contributing factors, we thought this was important to note, for those who became homeless in Glendale for the first time, was thirteen out of the fifty-three, twenty-five percent became homeless due to loss of employment, fifteen percent was due to unexpected illness, about thirteen percent as was a result of rent increases in Glendale, and about nine percent were, um, answered as a result of a divorce. The twenty-twenty-two count showed a twenty-seven percent increase in the male homeless population and a twenty-seven percent increase in the female homeless population, same number of self-identified, um, transgender homeless. And when we conducted this count, um, we were able to use G I S mapping. So, anytime our volunteers came across a homeless individual or family, whether it was in cars, encampment, um, they were able to capture the exact location. This is something that we'll be doing here in Glendale as part of our C O C. Uh, anytime our outreach teams go out or our volunteers go out, we are going to start pinning the locations so that we get an idea of where we have the most, um, homeless population, and we can, you know, provide more outreach in those specific areas. During the count, we noticed that it was primarily centralized or localized in the downtown Glendale area. Um, so, we wanted to kind of mention that here. Uh, majority of the clients that we came across or individuals were centralized in this location, Central Park area. Race and ethnicity demographics, about sixty-four percent of the total two hundred and twenty-five, um, identified as, as white. Uh, sixty-six percent of, of those individuals or families were sheltered, thirty-four percent were unsheltered, and thirty, about fifteen percent surveyed, um, identified as black or African-American, four percent identified as Asian, and two percent as, um, American Indian or Alaskan, Alaskan Native. About fifty-four percent persons identified as non-Hispanic or Latino, and thirty-six identified as Hispanic and Latino. Ten percent unfortunately did not respond to the survey questions. We did ask some questions specifically related to the impacts of COVID-nineteen. Um, to our surprise, we didn't see a very high number or percentage, only seven percent of the fifty-four unsheltered respondents, so these were folks who actually responded to the questions, um, experienced loss of income due to COVID, and as a result, um, became homeless. Next steps. So, our priorities for the Glendale Continuum of Care, we want to continue prior, prioritizing housing placement for the unsheltered chronically homeless population. This is a local and national objective that we would like to continuously work towards meeting. Uh, of course, you know, it'd be difficult to say that we will eliminate homelessness or end homelessness, but we sure are trying to prioritize these groups, um, veterans, those who are suffering from mental illness, substance abuse, domestic violence, youth, seniors, persons with H I V, AIDS, and other disabilities. Um, and through the coordination of our C E S system, we have a coordinated entry system here in Glendale. Essentia serves as our lead agency, therefore, therefore, all individuals who are seeking services, homeless services, come through Essentia, um, to get connected through our access center. We want to expand our resources, we want to collaborate, bring in more groups, more people to help us focus on this goal and to increase, uh, permanent housing for our clients, and also utilize our housing-first approach, which is really eliminating specific barriers or requirements that we have when clients come through to access services. We want to continue to work strategically to reprioritize available funds, to reallocate, uh, programs that are no longer HUD's priority, and continue, we have to compete for these funds annually. The C O C program, we have a very intense competition process that we go through each year. In fact, we're going through it now as we speak. So, we do have to score and rank our projects or service providers. They do have to be able to meet their expenditure rates, they have to hit those outcomes, you know, those target goals. Um, it's a very competitive process that we go through each year, so one of our goals is to continually strategize and to reprogram funds to serve, better serve our community. The first recommendation that we have is to utilize the city's Measure S funds, um, to increase affordable housing for our community members to end homelessness in Glendale. Our second recommendation is county funding. Currently, the Glendale C O C receives Measure H funding. It's around two hundred and nine thousand this year. As you know, annually, we contribute to over ten million dollars in sales tax to the county. However, the amount that we receive through Measure H is nearly, it's not enough to help fund our existing programs in the Glendale C O C. So, one of the things that we have been doing is coordinating closely with the county to secure additional funding and also gain some flexibility with the strategies that we are funded for. Recommendation three is to continue working with the state, um, to receive additional funds through our homeless housing assistance and prevention programs, and to increase our interim housing in Glendale. We don't have enough interim housing programs to support all of our clients. We currently do not have, um, a hotel-motel voucher-type program that can take our clients on until we are able to connect them to more long-term housing and services. So, that's one thing we would like to do, and also increase our collaboration with our mainstream and healthcare service providers. Um, recommendation four, as I mentioned, veterans, finish the job of ending homelessness among unsheltered veterans. Recommendation five is children, develop, adapt, and implement a zero-tolerance policy for children living on our streets, um, and vehicles and other places not meant for human habitation. Recommendation six is housing-first approach for chronically homeless. We want to completely align with HUD's housing-first model and develop a low-barrier approach for the chronically homeless individuals and families, for example, eliminating income requirements at entry, eliminating service requirements at entry, um, to be able to more quickly rehouse, uh, our unsheltered population. Outreach is another big component. Uh, continue to collaborate and expand the homeless outreach program in Glendale in connection with the Glendale Police Department, Community Impact Bureau, and Development, uh, Department of Mental Health. We currently have a program, uh, through our Glendale Police Department's core unit, which was funded with our CARES Act funding this past year, and it has been a great program. Our, our police department, the group of officers that work with our homeless population, are really working closely with them, building rapport, getting them connected to Essentia, uh, through our regular outreach program, and they're really trying to make that connection, um, to get some of our chronically homeless clients that have been on our streets for some ten-plus years into our emergency housing voucher program. In conclusion, uh, the City of Glendale's twenty-twenty-two count, uh, wasn't, uh, was a collaborative effort between the City of Glendale, our, our, our service providers, the continuum, and the community leaders. This would not have been possible without the support of these incredible groups, and they are all mentioned one by one in our comprehensive report, each volunteer, each organization. A huge thank you to them for making this a successful count year after year. Um, the sources of data provide valuable information to the Glendale's annual C O C application to HUD, which I mentioned, and our consolidated annual performance evaluation report, which are all required, um, data that we have to submit to HUD. So, I just, I all ended with this. If you guys have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, I wanted to go slide by slide, I have like questions, but obviously, I didn't want to interrupt that you finished, but I'm going to go to my colleagues first.
Just, uh, first of all, I want to thank, um, you and all the agencies that work on this, um, homelessness issue. It's hard work, um, but the results of the work are quite evident as we see kind of us taking care of, um, the population that suffers from homelessness, um, because I think our situation in the city is much better than neighboring, uh, cities, in my opinion. And people ask why. The reason why is all this work that goes into it, um, by everyone, uh, that contributes. So, really appreciate how methodical, um, the work is and how data-driven and, um, you know, kind of really getting into the, the roots of the problem. Um, having said that, I do have a couple of questions, and I, and I've asked this question before, um, or when I've requested reports, this is kind of where I was going with one of them. I looked in your comprehensive report, you do note that you have received five hundred and ninety-four thousand approximately from Measure H funds. Um, it would be good to know, and you mentioned a two hundred thousand figure as well, it would be good to see a year-over-year kind of comprehensive, um, report out of what funds were getting, coming back for all that were contributing into the county. Um, as I've mentioned, I think before, it's a little bit of a, um, double-edged sword because the more successful we are in our program with having less people in the streets, the less, I think, uh, funding we end up qualifying for. So, we end up being a donor city versus a recipient city when it comes to this. So, I, I'd like to see that kind of continuing, like, the overall year-over- So I'd like to see that kind of continuing, like the overall year-over-year, it'd be good to incorporate into these reports so that, you know, I think when you're looking at county funding, when it comes time to advocating for our fair share of the funds, you know, it would help to show what we're actually been getting over the years. So that was one. The other thing is I'm wondering whether, if we're going to end up having CARES Act money returned, whether or not this is a potential place for some of that money to be reprogrammed as one of the areas, given all the work that these agencies are doing, if it can be positioned within the qualifications of such funds.
I'll let Maggie speak to that.
Mrs. Cyan also has CARES Act funding. She has round two funding that she also has to repurpose.
Okay.
And that being said, we do have, we do fund Essensia and Door of Hope and Salvation Army as you saw in the presentations with Eric. So that being said, we can fund our homeless prevention programs that we currently have as a response to COVID. If you want to talk a little bit more about CARES Act Round Two, which is the homeless services funds that you received.
Absolutely, absolutely. Committee Member Arminian, I'd be happy to go over the CARES Act funding. We are going to be reprogramming, actually, a good portion of the CARES Act funds. We're going to have, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but a substantial amount that we do need to reprogram. I will be working very closely with Ms. Carverian to go through the substantial amendment process. As you know, you can't reappropriate these funds right away. There is a process we have to go through with HUD. But we're currently closing out all of our existing contracts. So September thirtieth is when we will be done with all of the existing programs. We will be working very closely with our service providers to be more strategic with where we want these funds to go and what agency is going to need more funding. I can already tell you that we, there's a great lack, again, as many beds as we've increased through our rapid rehousing program, there is a great need there to be able to rapidly rehouse some of our homeless families. We've got an agency specifically that's exceeding their numbers, but they're running out of funds. So we're going to be very strategic, pull in all of our providers and work with, very closely with Maggie to repurpose these funds. I do want to briefly mention that we will be going through our strategic planning process. For the first time ever, the Glendale COC will be working on a homeless action plan. And in October, we're still trying to figure out the dates right now, but as soon as we have those dates, we'll be happy to share the information with all of you. We will be launching, I think, a group of six or seven community meetings and work groups with, we're going to pull in as many people as we possibly can from different organizations, stakeholders, folks with lived experience who could bring in their knowledge and expertise to draft this action plan. And the ESG CARES Act funding will be included as part of this planning group to see where we can best utilize these funds, because we do have funding out there. We just need to be more strategic with where we want to place the funding in Glendale. So that is definitely something we will be looking into. Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank the committee, the group that did the counting. I know every year you guys go out, it's really not so fun and not necessarily safe either, from what I've heard. I have a friend that it's in LA County in a homeless program, and he works out on the streets on a daily basis. And he says the stories, unfortunate stories that they see and hear. So my hats out to you guys, to the group, everyone that went out and did the count, and thank you for the report. It was a great report. I looked at it over, over the weekend, actually, I read it over very detailed and what you presented today. So thank you. Thank you, and good luck for the, hopefully we don't have homelessness in our city at least, and we don't have to worry about the funding either. I think that's would be a great achievement if we can ever do that, which highly doubtful. But it's a good hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Member Avadiseu.
Thank you. My, I add my gratitude as well. I, I love this, the report, it's very specific. And I want to focus in, well, just two things. The trend is beautiful in Glendale, you know, it's going down. But to be factual, it did go up from 2020 to 2022. We did have an increase. And one of the biggest challenges with the homeless population is mental illness. So I know that, you know, I don't know what the difference is between page nine of the specific, of the detailed report and page eleven, where you address one, I think it might be the combined sheltered and non-sheltered, and that's what the difference might be between nine percent unsheltered probably in health challenges, whereas it's twenty percent health challenges with a sheltered. And I just think that it's easier to identify if they're sheltered. But I, I imagine the unsheltered is much greater than this. It's just harder to identify or, or, you know, decide there is mental illness with this person who's unsheltered. So I, I think mental illness is an area that we should pay a lot of attention to. And when we have our, our partners and collaborators, they, they should have that ability to offer mental illness. And the funding should also be substantial, more substantial, because I heard Essensia say that one of their last studies said that they're, when they work with the Glendale Police Department, that they say it actually takes fourteen times, you know, fourteen to fifteen times to take them off the street before they actually start accepting, wanting to accept the help. And that's due to mental illness. So it's a lot more expensive when that's involved. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there if you have any comments.
Chair Garibian, Vice Chair Gabrelian, that's an excellent point that you make. There is definitely a great need in our community for mental health resources, substance abuse resources. I do have to be very transparent and say that there is a gap in our continuum. I think one of the things that we're working on specifically this year is to strengthen our collaboration with the county to secure funding through DSH, Department of Health Services, and DMH, Department of Mental Health, to be able to pull in some county resources outside of our continuum to help support our agencies, you know, bring in that additional support for staffing specifically for mental health. I think you can't just hire anyone in this profession. You have to have trained individuals. You have, have to have a trained group of people that come in and provide those much-needed services. We are happy to say that we are connecting with the state and the county. There is a new funding that's going to roll out. It's called the Homeless Incentive Program. It's HIP program. And this funding is specifically designated for healthcare management, housing navigation, housing retention for all of our homeless clients. We are still going through the initial stages with the county, but we hope to be able to partner. We did get some promising news last week, so we want to continue that collaboration to bring in the support for mental health. It is definitely a need. I think it's probably the most important thing in our community that will bring in our clients that are on the streets. These are the high acuity clients, those who, it, it takes sometimes more than fourteen times, you know? We have folks that are housed that are still on the streets. They're having a hard time maintaining their units because they're so used to sleeping on the streets. And so we're trying to establish that connection with those clients to bring in. It's a very complex issue. It's very challenging, but I think with the support from the county and from the state, we're hoping to increase support for our clients here in the continuum.
Thank you. I just want to say I wholeheartedly agree with addressing the mental health component of homelessness, and I'm glad that it was brought up.
Thank you, Committee Member.
Just a question to clarify, the chronicle, the distinguished, we have to distinguish two kinds, right? What's the purpose? Is there different funding for it, different program for it? Why are we separating the two?
Chair Garibian, yes, there is. For purposes of federal funding, HUD does give priority to individuals who are considered chronically homeless. This definition was set forth by HUD, and all of our clients who come through our programs, prospective clients, they have to be able to meet this definition to be prioritized for our long-term permanent supportive housing programs. However, if HUD notices that we're continuously reducing these numbers, we do have an option that it's called Dedicated Plus Beds. What we can do is also bring in other people who don't necessarily meet this definition but are in need of housing. So for now, we are prioritizing chronically homeless individuals. That's where the funding is, and that's the requirement that's set forth by HUD.
And they have to be disabled and also a timeframe of one year?
Yes.
So just they're disabled, but they don't have the timeframe, they don't qualify?
Unfortunately.
All right.
Yeah.
And as far as the purpose, I saw you guys interviewed, obviously, and substance abuse was the least percentage apparently. But of course, you had a fifty percent no answer, so I could push the number up. But pretty much that's the study you guys have. I just noticed substance abuse, five percent, that's questionable. Thank you so much for your presentation. No other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Next item, six action items. At a program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan, at one is a motion to review and approve the program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan.
Chair Garibian, members of the CDBG, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Garibian, members of the CDBG Advisory Committee, I know that we had just reviewed our current programs, our CIP programs, but yet we're already starting our program planning for next year, which is fiscal year 2023, 2024. So I'm going to have a very brief presentation on our schedule to share with the committee. And it's, again, one-year annual planning schedule. So from July through September of this year, we start to look at data. This is the 2020 Census American Community Survey data. We look at poverty levels and statistics as we prepare the program priorities for the year. That's, again, preparation and announcement of upcoming community events that are coming, community meetings that we're going to be having and hosting with, for the community agencies as well as residents in our area. In August, today, we meet and we review the program planning calendar, and hopefully we get it approved this afternoon. And then in September, we have a very busy month. We have our CDBG Open House, which is going to be held on September seventh via Teams at 11:00 AM. This is open to all community agencies that provide services in Glendale. And then on September 29th, we will have an in-person community meeting held at Pacific Park Community Center at 7:00 PM. We are also entertaining an additional community meeting tentatively scheduled for September 30th, the next day, to gather more residents, to get more input. This was also a community, a committee recommendation that was made by Vice Chair Gabrelian most recently. Again, we are also going to submit the 2122 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This is called the CAEPER. This is more of a financial report, most, like I had mentioned earlier about working with our finance department, we're consolidating our numbers from last year, and we have until September 30th to submit those numbers to HUD. So we have some flyers for our September meeting that are coming up. So our CDBG Open House and our community meeting. And then in October and November, on October 19th, we come back to council chambers and the advisory committee will be here to select a new chair and vice chair, approve the program priorities, review and approve the proposed funding allocation plan, review and approve the 2324 RFP instructions and application packets for public social services and CIP. That's on October 19th. In November, we will take that information to our city council housing authority on November 8th, and they will finalize and approve the 2324 program priorities, the funding allocation plan, and authorize the issuance of the RFP to our community agencies. Staff will also publish the 2324 RFP notice in the newspaper, social media, and other outlets. We will offer a technical assistance workshop for prospective community agencies that want to apply for CDBG funding. We're going to be hosting this on November 29th of this year. And in December, on December 29th, it will be the due date for community agencies to submit their proposals to staff. And in January, we start our real work. We get into the meat of it. Staff begins to review and analyze the funding proposals. We prepare a strengths and weaknesses analysis. And then in February, we collect all that information and we prepare those packets to our advisory committee and deliver them to you to review and prepare for the upcoming meeting. In March, the meetings are proposed to be on March 3rd for the all-day meeting. Usually, that's the public social services meeting. Dependent on the number of proposals we receive, we either do it all on March 3rd, or we have a tentative date of March 6th, which is a Monday, to schedule the CIP meetings, the interviews with the community agencies. This is, again, dependent on the number of proposals received and if we have the time to do either one day or a day and a half. On March 8th, we will publish the project, the projects that are recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee for 2324. We published that list, again, in the newspaper and social media and other marketing outlets. On April 6th, we will have a public meeting, and we invite the public to attend and give us their feedback on the advisory committee's recommendations that were made for 2324. Again, that will be held in person, no longer virtual, held in person on, at Pacific Park Community Center at 7:00 PM. And in May, on May 16th, this is, again, tentative, on May 16th, the City Council Housing Authority meeting to approve the final funding recommendations for 2324 for CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan. We also have to publish this in a 30-day comment period of the approved action plans, so we get public comment. And then staff, at this time of the year, will conduct program and finance monitorings of the current agencies, agencies that are funded now, and we present that to the committee as well in August. And in, in June and July, in June, we submit the final plan to HUD in their system, and then on July 1st, we start implementing the brand-new programs for CDBG, ESG, and the home program. This is our annual program planning cycle. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Maggie. Any questions with the schedule?
I do. Thank you very much. Got a full year ahead here. So on the, the very first item, conduct analysis of the 2020 American Community Survey five-year data estimates. Can you remind me a little bit more about the American Community Survey? And then also our own City of Glendale, where are we in our five-year deep dive into the community needs? Thank you.
Excellent question, Vice Chair Kenyonas Gabrelian. We are on year, well, we will be on year four of five for 2324. So that would leave us one year to start planning for our new con-plan or our new consolidated plan. The five-year American Community Survey, what that is, is it's the US Census results. And what the US Census does is they gather data each year, and they do it through the American Community Survey. And what staff does is we analyze. We have a group of numbers that we keep, data that we keep, and we analyze that. We analyze poverty levels. We analyze the number of seniors in our community. We analyze the number of youth that need assistance. We analyze a slew of, of events and things that are happening in Glendale. And we analyze that based off of Glendale versus LA County. So we want the committee to see what's happening in Glendale versus what's happening in all of LA County, just to give you an extra layer of information when you decide your program priorities for the year. Sometimes they change, as we've seen in the past. So I hope that answers your question on how we kind of review that data analysis. Is it a deep review? It is not, because we do that once every five years, the real, the needs assessment itself.
And I guess just a little follow-up, because we've gone through a pandemic and we've gone through, you know, racial turmoil, we've, you know, there's so many things that altogether, the increase in mental illness, et cetera. Is, is there a way to, before we do that deep dive? Is there a way to, before we do that deep dive, a year and a half, maybe, more or less, right from now, to do a little deeper dive into the 2020 results? Just so that we can really be responding to the needs of the community coming out. And I keep saying, coming out of the pandemic. I mean, people think we've already come out, but we haven't. I mean, the challenges are incredible now, that all of the, that inflation is higher and that the help from the federal government isn't coming in anymore. So I think that this is really where it's going to hit. And we, our deep dive was five years ago, prior to any of that. So...
We will do everything we can with the data that we're given from the federal government through the American Community Survey to get you those numbers. We could be more specific, if you'd like. If you have a list or an idea of what you'd like to see presented, we'll be more than happy to take a look and see what we can get you, what data we can get you. We can work with our planning department as well. They're pretty good about doing analysis and surveys as well. That being said, we can look at population groups or subgroups, like the developmentally disabled. We can look at the homeless population, as Arsenet presented, or the senior population, or the youth, or immigrants. So we can look at different sub-populations and subgroups. I can provide that to the committee if you'd like to take a look at the community, American Community Survey, and see what you'd like to see a stat on, and we'll be more than happy to show you that. I have been looking at the poverty levels, and we had gone from about 15% four years ago when I had started this program. It dipped down into the 13, 13.2%. It is now 13.9%. So I'm noticing the rise again. So you are correct, when the COVID pandemic is affecting the city, we notice it in the numbers. So that's something we will present to you. If there's additional information that the committee wants, I'll be more than happy to review it, as well as staff.
Yes, I think, I think a focus on mental illness, not just with the homeless population, but across the board, maybe how to collaborate with our school district, community colleges, you know, other mental health facilities around the city. And I think, well, some of the homeless data that came out did reflect the fact that the COVID had a, an effect on causing additional homelessness when they lost their jobs. So I don't know, and I think what you're doing already is probably hitting on some of that. So, and it's probably not up to us, but if there's a way to collaborate with maybe the city's community development department on helping small businesses that went under. I don't know if maybe through some type of development, educational outreach. I'm not sure. I really don't know. I'd love to see the 2020 American Community Survey in additional data so that we might, if there is some additional help, so that we can focus in on this year.
We are also attending the Healthy, Glendale Healthy Coalition. That's the three hospitals that get together, and they also collect data. So that is something, in addition to the American Community Survey, that we can gather for the committee and include in the report in October. If the committee wishes, we could do that as well.
Great. And then just finally, what, the outreach. Having gone through two years of outreach and not seeing a lot of participation from the community, are there any other coalitions that we could go to, like you're doing for the Glendale Healthy Coalition? How, you know, are there nonprofits, coalitions of nonprofits? Are there conferences where they go to? Are there, you know, that we can go out to them as well, instead of just sending out an ad and waiting for them to join us? Because that, that response is so limited. And it's the same groups every single year.
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, committee member Quinones-Gabrielian. That's a, I mean, this is the type of discussion and direction we'd like from the committee, and what more we could do to be able to outreach. I think we all agree with, with you in, in at least the last two years, and we think that COVID is possibly one of the reasons. We did see more participation in the virtual meetings, but in the last in-person meeting, we barely had any. We really didn't have any community members participate. And we do our part as staff to advertise it to the community, whether it's in, through our newsletters, through our website, through outreach through the school district, you know, the flyers in the mail to just let the community know that we're having this community meeting, because we do want to hear from them. One of the things we've talked about, I think at the last meeting with you and one of, two of our Parks Commission members, was that we do a little bit more outreach with the con-plan, the five-year strategic plan, because we do work with a consultant, and we do have a little bit more resources to be able to do that. But to do that level of community outreach on an annual basis, it has been, it will be challenging for staff. One thing we talked about is this year incorporating a survey. So not just the community meetings, but also developing a survey that could maybe be sent out to families, or possibly, I'm just not sure that it's in, it would be in time for the back-to-school nights at the schools, because we can't be at the schools gathering information, because the type of, you've attended those community meetings. The type of communication and the questions we asked, you almost need to be in a sit-down setting to be able to kind of question-and-answer type session. It's that kind of a community meeting to be able to pull from the community exactly what your needs are. Because as you know, people will attend, and everybody has a different need. But in order for you to be able to know what is the larger need for the community, you kind of need to hear from a larger population or the agencies that serve the population to be able to gather the information. We also want to make sure we're hearing from the population that needs to benefit from these funds. So we want to make sure we're meeting with the low-income population in South Glendale, where the funds could be best used and benefit based on HUD guidelines. And not necessarily, it's not to say that people outside of South Glendale don't have the same type of feedback or wouldn't suggest the type of use that would benefit the population, that the funds are to be used for. But I think the needs would be different. We'd hear different types of needs, like maybe they talk about, instead of housing, you know, they might talk about street improvements instead of, you know, and where is that need? We also talked about prioritizing the priorities so that the agencies that are applying for funding know where the committee's priorities are. We talked about that maybe for the next funding cycle. So we're thinking that maybe at the next meeting, when we bring back the actual RFP, where you would review for us to approve to be able to issue it, we could get a little bit more feedback on what do we want to include in the RFP? Do we want to prioritize the priorities? So that, you know, the, the agencies know, for example, and this is just an example. It's not to say, but let's say, youth needs are more of a priority than homelessness, or homelessness is more of a priority than housing or legal services. Just so the agencies also know where the focus is for the committee and for the community as a whole. If you have suggestions, we're happy to take suggestions as far as how could we better outreach. But I think in order for us to hear from the community and to be able to prioritize those needs properly, we almost feel like it needs to be a standalone meeting or some sort of dedicated time at another meeting. So if we were to go to a back-to-school night, for example, or an HOA-type meeting, I'm not sure that there are HOAs, like in South Glendale, where the benefits should be, because they're mostly apartment complexes and not necessarily, you know, HOAs. So, like I said, we want to hear back from you, because you hear from the community. We will also put our heads together to bring you some options, and that's why I think one of the dates that we left as a tentatively scheduled in September, we want to be able to outreach one more time in a different manner, and we're not really sure what that manner should be. So we're happy to take feedback from the committee, whether that's another community meeting at, let's say, a school site. We used to have, the first one, which is scheduled for September 7th, or I'm sorry, September 29th, is in-person at Pacific Community Center. We could try to schedule another in-person at Mann Elementary School or, you know, Roosevelt Junior High School, wherever you feel maybe a location change might bring in more people, or do a second meeting to allow for more people to attend, or maybe just a virtual meeting, like we tried last year. You know, you give them both options. So, I mean, it's a good suggestion. We feel that we do need to be able to hear from the community more. We're just not sure how to. And one of the questions we've asked in the past is, you know, how else could we outreach? So where did you hear about this meeting? And how, what's something different we could do to either intensifies people to attend the meetings or be able to get their feedback? But we're thinking maybe some sort of a structured survey might allow people to do it in the comfort of their home and not necessarily have to come into a community meeting if they don't, one, feel comfortable, two, don't have time to. And also, you know, the challenge is, just the survey itself is also the technological challenges. Like, does, does the community that we want to hear from have a computer at home? Have the ability to email us back? We hope they do, but we know that that's not true, because even with COVID and the schools being on lockdown, a lot of the students, GUSD, had to provide the computers to the students, because they didn't have that at home. And so we do know that that is a challenge, and some families might not be able to return a survey. So these are some of the challenges that we consider and want to take into consideration as we develop the plan for the, for the next year. But definitely, community outreach is something we, we hope to hear more from, from the community, because we didn't last year. And we're, we're thinking, maybe with people coming out more, there would, there'll be a little bit more comfort, maybe, and the date, too. And we know that there was, there was a game last year, and we weren't sure if people were just too busy and focusing on watching that at home. But please do give us feedback on what more you think we could do.
So you, you mentioned homeowners, HOAs, homeowners associations all over the city, renters associations. How about religious, you know, religious groups and the churches? So that you, and of course, the school district is... It is great. That's how you get to the parents, right? That's how you get to all of the parents that go to public school with children in their public school. So that's, but do we have a, a list of the 501(c)(3)'s also in the city? And we send it to every single 501(c)(3) in the city already? Okay. Yeah.
We definitely do. We send them the invitations.
But the survey is a great idea. I'm, I'm very happy. I think surveys give you an insight, and people, hopefully. I mean, you might even consider using some of the funding, or maybe fundraising, or asking the city for some type of a prize, right? So everybody who returns a survey is eligible for something, something at the end, and that'll incentivize them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for detailed explanation. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that this is not a predicament that is unique to Glendale or the staff or this, this sort of thing. I do community meetings all the time with much larger invitations going out, and usually only get, you know, you could send 500,000 invitations out and get 50 participants. And I'm talking about an online community meeting. So I think you have to look at all different channels. And I would encourage virtual as well in that mix somewhere. But trying to get people to an actual physical meeting is a dilemma overall in terms of public participation. So it's not unique in terms of the challenge we're experiencing.
Very good. Thank you so much. What's next, Iris?
This is actually an action item. So we would need a motion and a second to approve the plan.
Anyone?
I'll make the motion. Accept the plan as presented?
Second. Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Yes.
Avedisian?
Yes.
Banokian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quinones-Gabrielian?
Yes.
And Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Item 6B, City of Glendale Citizen Participation Plan for the CDBG ESG and Home Programs. At one is a motion to review and approve the program planning schedule for the fiscal year 2023. I'm sorry, I think this is mistaken. City of, I'm sorry, it's a motion to review and approve the City of Glendale Citizen Participation Plan for the CDBG ESG and Home Programs.
Chair Garibian, members of the advisory committee. This is a piggyback of the conversation you just had with the program planning. As a recipient of HUD funds, we have to have a citizenship participation plan for the City of Glendale by way of the three programs, the CDBG, ESG, and Home Programs. What is it really depend on? Basically, it's a requirement to adopt the plan that sets forth policies and procedures for citizenship participation. And really, it's encouragement of citizenship participation, just basically what we've been talking about. This plan, the citizen, citizen participation plan, it has to provide and encourage citizens to participate in the development of the consolidated plan and any substantial amendment we have, or our performance report, the CAPR, or the Annual Action Plan. And again, this is designed especially to encourage low- and moderate-income persons where CDBG funds are proposed to be used, and residents of predominantly low and moderate-income neighborhoods. So that's really our target audience. We also have to take appropriate actions to encourage the participation of all citizens, minorities, non-English speakers, as well as persons with disabilities. So this is how we look at our plan. There are other sections in the citizenship participation plan. There are citizen involvement, of course, with the consolidated plan and action plan, the CAPR. Of course, our public hearings, our community meetings. There has to be access to records, technical assistance, the workshops that we provide to our community agencies. There's also a section in comments and complaints, bilingual opportunities. We put in appeals. And then there's also this anti-displacement relocation. This is part of our CIP program. It's a federal law. If we are to do, for instance, housing projects, and we have to relocate five residents, we have to provide funding for that. So that's also part of this plan. And assurances. So this plan that we had kind of looked at, and Ms. Alexander and I reviewed it, it was particularly dated, and it hadn't been updated since, well, 2020, when we had to update it and add this amendment to the plan. And it was a HUD request that we update this language. And it's on page five of the citizen participation plan. The amendment says, "In case of disaster, emergency events that may not allow for in-person public hearings," because you have to have in-person public hearings as part of the plan. "And this includes man-made disasters, natural disasters, pandemic, and terrorism or bioterrorism. Public hearings can also be held via online platforms and are pursuant to HUD regulations." So once we did that, we reviewed the plan even further, and we wanted to update the language in the plan. This is not an amendment, but these are just minor updates that we had to include to bring the plan up to basically 2022. And that includes, we did a program name change. It was still reflecting Emergency Shelter Grant. That's the grant. That's the program that Arsenet signed oversees. It's now referred to as the Emergency Solutions Grant. So we updated that information. We also did a name change update. The Continuum of Care, which we always refer to as COC, it used to be called Glendale Homeless Coalition. So we updated that language. We also updated staffing names. We've, you know, we've changed and turned over staff, so we updated that. We even had address updates. City and HUD addresses have changed, so we changed all of that. And then, of course, website updates, web address changes, and then minor typo corrections that were made. So the plan that you're looking at, that's part of Exhibit 1. The main amendment is the allowance of the virtual meeting now because of the pandemic. So our recommendation to the committee is to review and provide feedback on the amended plan. And then we're going to be posting this, the plan on the city's website, and then sending out a public notice for a 10-day comment period for review. And then the city... And then, the CDBG Advisory Committee will review the plan in October, and if there are any changes, for instance, if there's any comments that are made by citizens or residents, we'll let this committee know, and then we'll move the plan forward to our city council and housing authority for final approval, and then we're going to post the citizen participation plan on our city's website, and now that it would be an updated plan reflecting 2022. And we'll try and update that periodically. If it's just updates and no amendments, we'll just update it as staff. Anything that's an amendment needs to come to the committee. So, that being said, this concludes the presentation for the citizen participation plan.
Thank you, Maggie, and Mr. Armenian.
Can you go back to the slide on the proposed amendment on virtual? I have a couple of questions on this. Seems like a little bit disconnected from reality, which is post-COVID, you know, in most organizations we've included, or, you know, they've gone to hybrid models where online participation is kind of blended in with in-person participation. This seems to kind of indicate that the world has to end for us to, you know, do something online. So my question is, are there legal requirements that prevent us from incorporating more online participation blended with in-person? So for example, take this meeting, I know city council accepts comments from public online, virtually, even though they are in person, that's in addition to being able to do that in person. So I'm just wondering whether we can incorporate online more as a practice, regular practice versus only if the world's ending will we kind of do online community meeting, for example? I'm just wondering if there are restrictions.
Excellent question. We are under the impression that the citizenship participation plan is the minimum requirement. So the minimum requirement is we host one to two public meetings. If we meet the minimum requirement, which is in-person, one to two meetings per year, you can do everything else that you'd like outside of that. That's allowed.
Just to add to that, obviously, we started an oral communication, we take calls, which we didn't have before COVID, and I assume this is something going to stay, it's not because of, so it's something just adds to it.
This is HUD language that we placed in, they asked us to put this into the plan, all plans across the country included this language. Now that we have this, we know that we can do virtual, I think we didn't do virtual because there was no reason to, and we didn't maybe think outside of the box. We had to think outside of the box because of the pandemic. And now that we've noticed that virtual, some people actually prefer it, you know, you get a bit more, you know, higher attendance, easier, you don't have to park. So that being said, as long as we meet our requirement for the in-person, there is no reason why we shouldn't have addition to, which is the online surveys, telephone calls, and whatnot, and we've been doing that as well. We've been offering that, we didn't get too many phone calls, even emails we offered, we said, "Email us your thoughts, we'll take your emails as well." So we're trying everything.
They can do even YouTube channels, and they can just type in their question, anything is possible with technology these days.
Thank you. The slide that you talk about, the change in the two, there you go, updates to citizen program name change from Emergency Shelter Grant to Emergency Solutions Grant, and then the next one, too, Glendale Homeless Coalition to the Glendale Continuum of Care. To me, it seems people know homeless versus continuum of care, and Emergency Shelter to Emergency Solutions, it's a little cryptic, like, why is it solutions? Is it encompassing something else? And what were, why are we changing the names?
So that's an excellent question, Vice Chair Quinones Gabrielian. The first reason why we changed it is because HUD changed the name of the program itself. So HUD used to call the program Emergency Shelter Grant. Then they changed it to Emergency Solutions Grant. It would be a good question for Arseni Asian, why they changed it, why they felt the need to change it from shelter to solutions. They probably wanted a broader term to include, because I think the ESG program itself includes shelter, rapid rehousing, prevention, there's a whole slew of, an umbrella of programs that are under that program. For the name change of Glendale Homeless Coalition, that's a city reason. So the city used to call it the Glendale Homeless Coalition, five years ago, four years ago, or five years ago. They changed it to the Glendale Continuum of Care, or became a Continuum of Care. Only, you might be able to answer the Continuum of Care question, I don't know if you remember that far back, the change.
Actually, the Glendale of Continuum of Care has been around about twenty, since 1996, but there was a, there is a Glendale Homeless Coalition comprised of a number of nonprofits in the area, social service agencies, and they meet on a quarterly basis. So it's a group of individuals that represent homeless services, so that's the coalition. With the Glendale Continuum of Care, is the advisory board, similar to the CDBG Advisory Committee. It's similar to, it's an advisory board where they make the funding recommendations, and recommend funding to the social service agencies that apply for HUD funds.
I'm familiar with the Continuum of Care, I was just asking why, you know, why we don't have a homeless coalition? Everybody knows the homeless, homeless is homeless, right? Continuum of Care, you actually have to explain, you know, what continuum of care is, how we get the homeless into a continuum of care with all of these collaborating agencies, but it's just, it's cryptic, you know, I don't know why they, why not make it simple? And if it's homeless, it's homeless.
Chair.
So are we talking about two things, then? You're saying there are actually two things. The Glendale Homeless Coalition decide was a bigger thing than the Continuum of Care, and so they are renaming themselves to be aligned to Continuum of Care.
It's actually HUD wording, so Continuum of Care comes from HUD specifically, so that's why Glendale became its own Continuum of Care. I hope I answered that correctly.
Yeah, they just like to complicate everything, I think.
Make sure, give us the HUD phone number.
We're very, very-
House to make.
Basically, we don't have any control. It's the HUD wording.
We don't have any control, unless we go to HUD. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? We're good. Okay, Iris.
Okay, this is also an action item, and again, the proposed motion is to review and provide feedback on the amended-
Would you like to put the motion?
I can, yes. I so move the motion to accept your plan. The, which one here, alternative?
Voting on the specific amendment, or all of it?
Basically, you would be making a motion for us to accept your feedback on the proposed updates.
Okay, I don't know if I can make that motion, because I don't understand it. So you're just asking us, you're just presenting it to it tonight, we're giving you feedback, and so-
We're taking it into consideration.
Okay, so you're going to take-
Sorry, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Chair Garabian, members of the committee, so the plan itself does require for it to be made public and take in public comments, so we didn't have enough time to publish it for the public comment period. So today before you, it's to review and provide feedback for us to incorporate into the plan. So if the plan as written is not what you are okay with, and you'd like us to amend it further, we'll take your feedback, incorporate it into the plan, publish it for public comment, and then take the feedback that we get from the community, if any, and present it to council for adoption. Actually, it doesn't need to go to council, it could be amended by you, so we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting for final adoption. So right now, we'll take your feedback, for example, you know, I think one of the comments made by committee member Armenian was, "Why don't we make it where a virtual platform is offered regardless of a pandemic?" If that's what the board wants us to do, like going forward, regardless of a pandemic, if we want to incorporate that into the plan, to say that we will always offer it as just a virtual, or we want to have at least two community meetings, one virtual, one in-person, regardless of whether we're in a pandemic year, or there's a biohazard, or whatever other HUD criteria there is, we can incorporate that into the plan and say that there will always be two community meetings, one virtual, one in-person. But if we just want to play it by ear and not put it in the plan, and just know that should we want to do an additional on any given year, we can take that feedback as part of the annual schedule, we could incorporate it that way. So really, it's up to the committee, and we would want majority agreement from the committee to incorporate whatever change, or consider your feedback and amend the plan, and then make it public for public comment.
I have a follow-up question, I'm sorry. May I? Thank you. Just because we had two comments, right? And then, to Mr. Armenian's comment, Ms. Kavarn, you said this is the minimum, and this is what they've asked us to incorporate on a nationwide basis, and the same thing to my comments, you know, those were HUD, and so we can't really change any of it. So I think, I love the idea of having, taking advantage of the efficiencies of, you know, virtual meeting, so we can always, can we do something in another area of the plan to just say that, or are we, are we, are our hands tied with the HUD recommendations to?
No, it's committee member Quinones Gabrielian, it's up to the city, so this is our specific plan. I think what Ms. Kavarian was trying to say is, the plan as submitted is the minimum that HUD requires us to do, so we put the minimum into the plan. That doesn't mean that we can't put more into the plan. So if you want to make it more official, and you want to incorporate it into the plan, we can, and Ms. Kavarian wants to jump in, so go ahead.
Apologies.
It's okay.
Well, this would have been a great conversation with the program planning process, because if we wanted to add additional meetings, surveys, whatnot, we could have done that then as well. So it is year to year, you can always update, and I would prefer you do it that way rather than put it into the plan, because you want to make changes each year. New members come, members go, and if you have specific requirements, for instance, this year, we'll be more than happy to take those and incorporate them into the program plan itself.
That's what I was going to say, so this is a minimal, we can always add to it as needed, instead of just writing it and black it.
So when is the time to do that?
Next year, is that what you're saying?
No. So, basically, to clarify, so you could do that at any time, meaning, so we just started the program planning cycle, you just approved a timeline, right? So we mentioned that there was an additional meeting that we put in there, just in case you want to have a virtual meeting. I know you didn't make an official, like, motion or didn't incorporate it, but I kind of took the feedback that I heard from you, that you do want to have an additional, at a minimum, virtual meeting. So we will have two community meetings. So that's kind of that timeline that we just presented, would have been where we incorporate anything that we want to do in addition outside of this plan. I think what Ms. Kavarian is trying to say is, if we do incorporate, for example, like, this year now, we find that it is important to have virtual meetings, but maybe five, 10 years down the line, it might be important to just do virtual meetings and not do in-person. And so every time we deviate from the plan, we have to amend the plan. So this would be the minimum, but that doesn't mean that we can't do more. So, again, you could require it to be a part of the plan, I don't want to say you can't, but I think staff's recommendation is to not make it part of the plan, and to just make it as part of the annual planning process, and leave the plan to be the minimum. So we heard from you that you did want us to include one more additional meeting date, which we had identified in the timeline, and we'll do a virtual meeting with the feedback that we got from committee member Armenian, if the rest of the committee's okay. We assumed you were okay with it, because nobody said, "No, we shouldn't." So I think, just the staff, we assumed you were okay with that to be incorporated, because it was already part of the timeline, the schedule. So, having said that-
Can I test this, just with a really small example? So on page fourteen, there's public notification, public hearings, and in bullet two, it says "Social media platforms and other papers used for noticing may include but not limited to," and then it names just platforms, then it just names two newspapers. There are more newspapers that operate in Glendale, right? There's Oragark, there's Courier, I'm talking about just the Armenian community, that's one example, there's probably other communities that also have their papers. Would this be the time where you'd say, "Include those," or you would wait till some other time?
Well, you want to mention the names, or just locate newspapers?
It's mentioning two, but it's not mentioning others, so if this is a kind of the standard, the minimum setting thing, you know, there's a lot more that you could include in there if you're going to start naming individual newspapers, or you could just say a category, say, "Community newspapers that reach the different demographic groups within the city," to keep it general, and then you can go and figure out, there's 10 of them, there's 15 of them, because you've named two of them, right? But you haven't, there's more than that, we know that.
It does say, "But not limited to," and so it could include more than that. So you're right, you either could ask for it to be incorporated into the plan specifically, but that doesn't limit us to just these two, so you could also-
I'm saying, go one way or the other, either say, keep it general, like, the others are just platforms, right? You're not saying this page on Facebook, or that account on Instagram. So if you kept it general, I'm using this just as an example, of like, is this the time where you do that, or you want to wait till some future cycle to do those sorts of additions?
I think if it's going to be, if it's going to amend the language in any way in the plan, as it stands today, this is the time to do it, because we do need to modify it and make it public for public comment. So if you want to make it more general and not specific, even though it's not limiting, but if you, as a committee, would feel more comfortable making it more generic and not specific to any one newspaper, now is the time to give that type of feedback.
That's what I would recommend, so you don't get calls from other newspapers, saying, "Why aren't we named?" Not that they're looking for this to come out, they may, you never know, but I'm just saying, make it, just to make it consistent, make it a category versus individual things.
It's obvious, as she mentioned, it says "not limited to," you can just put an additional "such as," and that should take care of the rest, instead of adding names.
I would recommend not naming names, just so you don't get into-
We can broaden that, because the news press had gone under, I think, what was it, a year and a half ago?
Yeah, now it's back.
And then we put the outlook, so honestly, it might be a better suggestion to keep it broad, so then we can do that.
Very good. Having said that, and I think that was great, just, and I don't know if it's for staff, and to do the outreach, not to mention it here, since we're going general instead, but take a look at some of the just smaller community papers, like Elva Carroll for the college, you know, I don't know if the school district has something, you know, just all those different places, the homeowners associations, again, the renters, and all of those groups, so that we're not just doing newspapers. So, if we're keeping it general, then I do move, I move that we review and approve the amended City of Glendale Citizens Participation Plan as recommended by staff.
May I, sorry, because you're not approving it now, may I just-
Oh, okay. What is it?
You could just, basically, if you want to make a motion to take back the feedback from the committee, as stated, incorporate it into the plan, it'll come back to you for approval at the next meeting.
There you go.
So instead of review and approve, just review and take back feedback.
Review and take back, so that you can come back for a vote, okay. For a presentation, thank you.
A second.
Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Avedisian?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quinones Gabrielian?
Yes.
And Chair Garabian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven is committee staff comments.
Who would like to go first?
I have some, I don't know if anybody wants to go first, okay. Well, we said goodbye already to one of our members, and change is hard, but change is good, and we welcome another new member, so welcome committee member Manukian to this. I wanted to make a personal comment about the fact that this is the first time that we meet in- about the fact that this is the first time that we meet in person since the two years that I've been on CDBG. And it's beautiful to be here and to see everyone face to face. I don't know how we're going to do this when we have the all-day meeting, because I usually line up my, my, my books all over the place. So I know, I know, he's going to keep me to my spot here. And we're just going to go like this instead. But I look forward to that. I also want to say that this is the first time I see all of you since we've had our election on June 7th. And we also had a change to our city leadership. And I am incredibly happy that I ran. I learned a lot. I got to know Glendale even more. And you know what? It, it, I was ready to accept everything from the very beginning. And so I want to say that community, this, this committee is very important to so many of the issues that we talk about out there on the campaign trail. And we've just got to get out there a lot more and bring back, I like these committee comments, anything that we see out there, you know, bring them back and just able to talk about them and how to improve our city. So don't get discouraged. If anybody else wants to, to run, it's very competitive, but it's so worthwhile. And sometimes you are able to do more outside of the city council. But it's, it's a good, good experience and very growth, growth. And I think, and also congratulate our new council, all of the members of our new council.
Thank you. Any comments?
Say thank you to the staff. Great preparation. I know a lot goes into the meeting and it was a very informative presentation. So appreciate all of that effort, welcome. Hopefully, you'll stick around after this session.
I think I have a choice.
But really, really appreciate all my colleagues and all the thoughtful comments. And I'm also, in the, in the spirit of being in person, looking forward to the tour that I saw on the calendar in November for our organizations that we're supporting. That's a very important time spent with those organizations, seeing them on the ground in terms of what they're doing really helps inform and make, bring to life what we are supporting. So encourage all of us to participate in that when the time comes.
Hopefully, they'll be done with their projects by November.
Hopefully.
Right? Yeah, so, well, thank you for the staff again. Great job for the presentations, the slide shows, everything else. I appreciate everything you guys do. Our job is the least amount compared. Everything else goes behind the doors. So thank you so much. And we're going to adjourn today at 4:55? No? One thing.
We do have one staff comment, Chair Garibian. Six months ago, we had been working with our community agencies to get the word out of all the wonderful things that they do in the community, basically what has been discussed today. And we've been working with our GTV6 group. And Iris is going to show one of the first, well, this is probably the second, I should say, the second agency that worked with our GTV6 crew to make these spotlight segments on what they do. And it's really enlightening. It's actually kind of, it's very feel-good and they did a great job. And this is the Campbell Center. So this is what you make recommendations on and this is where the funding goes and, thank you.
Great, let's see it.
Well, the Campbell Center started in 1954 and it started as an agency that supported children who weren't allowed to go to school. And that's really the basis of what we do. We support individuals who have otherwise been isolated, marginalized, are not really allowed to live their best life. And we provide the supports they need to live, work and play their way. In each of our three homes, they all have their own personality. And it's reflected by the interests and abilities of each of the residents in the homes. We focus on independence with support. Our staff make sure they're safe, but also to make sure they're integrating in the community and creating a peer group that they enjoy. In one home, like in Gogian, our residents are very communal. They like to do things together. They all love to paint or sing. Where at Alma House, they have a special coffee ritual that they all enjoy right after dinner. Each house is unique, just as unique as the residents that are in them. We offer the supports where we set goals. We expect them to do chores. We have tasks that are required. And that all helps individuals grow and hopefully to even become independent enough that they might move into their own apartment and move beyond our homes. That's our real goal. Community-based employment is really a win-win, both for the employer and for our associates that are hired, like Emile at Scarantinos. They love him, he loves being there. He applied for this job, he's doing what he wants to do. And that's really the philosophy now of our supported employment program.
In the past six months, I've got to know Emile pretty well. He's done his job more than most and better than I expected. He comes in with a smile every day and what a genuinely good person he is and hard worker. He's more of like a family member than an employee now.
In fact, our dream is that every business in Glendale hire at least one of our associates. We're very proud of our three group homes and what young adults really are looking for right now, a situation where they have their own room and perhaps more of a peer group in a community sense. We're looking to build that kind of a community where we want to create a pocket neighborhood of small individual homes within a community where our staff are there at the ready if they're needed. It provides a far more independent living. We plan to do it here in Glendale. This is a big dream and we're hoping the community can help us make it happen. We recently had a ribbon cutting where we have a grand opening of our beautiful new mural and we had the whole community here. And really, for us, that day represented our transformation as we move from our old ways to where we're going in the future.
Wonderful, wow.
What we'll try to do is present more of these segments to you and they'll be airing on GTV6. And they had done Glendale Youth Alliance as well. So those two are already ready to go and they're working with our other agencies. So you'll get to see it every time we meet and hopefully you get to catch it on GTV6. But this is what your recommendations do.
This is city doing it for the organizations?
Yes, the City of Glendale's Communications Department.
Are they going to be posting this on social platforms? Because it's great video.
We can talk to them about doing that as well.
Absolutely, yeah, it's wonderful to get to watch, it's great. Thank you so much. Anything else, any other comments? Thank you so much. We're going to adjourn at 5 o'clock.
Thank you.
Who did this for, Ms. Manukian especially? Ms. Manukian asked me earlier, we have to finish right at 5. And we had to grant her wish since she's new.